Good evening and welcome to our joint meeting of the Select Board and the Planning Board. I would like to take our meeting out of recess. I'll take a motion. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. All right, we are out of recess.
And I will call to order the March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board, pursuant to Chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand twenty-one. This meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Specific information on the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting in-person attendance, members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast Channel eight or Verizon Channel twenty-six or online at www.northandovercam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by technological means. In the event that we aren't able to do so despite best efforts, we'll post on the town and North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript or other comprehensive record of proceeding as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in any of the public hearings, which we'll have later on, but not attend the meeting in person, please email your question or comment. Prior to or during the meeting, to geneenright@j e n r i g h t@northandoverma.gov. Their question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. Okay, so I think we're going to start with an update on the Royal Crest project presented by Trinity Financial.
Good evening, awards. For the record, my name is Michael Lozano, and I'm a Vice President at Trinity Financial. On behalf of Jim Keefe and our partners at Air, Aimco, and our entire development team, we once again want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to update you on our plans for the redevelopment of Royal Crest. Over what is now going on years, we have met with literally hundreds of people in town, including abutters and other stakeholders, local businesses and community organizations, and of course, North Andover boards and committees. And these conversations have helped to shape and guide our plans for the better, as you'll see. The town has done a fantastic job of doing its due diligence and asking us tough and detailed questions on matters important to the town, which we appreciate. Over the many meetings and with hundreds of pages of plans and studies we have submitted, we think we have answered most of those questions and hope you will agree that the redevelopment of Royal Crest will be a significant benefit to the town. I'd like to introduce you to John Martin, our Architect and Principal of the firm Elkes and Menfredi, who will provide an overview of our updated plans and narrate a short video walkthrough to give you a good picture of what the new Royal Crest will look like under our proposal. John?
Thank you, Michael. I will take you through a presentation that we did for the Planning Board on February fifteenth. We have organized the site into four districts. As you know, there's seventy-six acres here. We've broken that down into four different characters, four different districts within the project, and each one has its own distinct architectural and physical character.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Did you mind telling me where I can find the materials? Do you know, do I need to go back to the old meeting or are they linked to in the current agenda?
They're linked to the current agenda.
Shall we proceed?
Let's just identify.
For the joint meeting?
Yeah, I'm looking at the joint meeting with the Select Board updating Royal Crest and it has the continued public hearings.
Yep, so with the continued public hearing.
For the zoning bylaw to establish Article nineteen.
Got it.
The document is titled twenty-two underscore O two one five underscore town meeting underscore V one dot P D F.
Perfect, thank you, Gene.
You're welcome.
Okay, so a little bit to remind you of a site that you know well, the existing conditions along Route one fourteen, taken in winter when most of the leaves are off of the trees. I want to call your attention particularly to image number three here, which depicts this building shown here where my hand is in the plan. That's the closest building to one fourteen in the existing condition, and the proposed condition sets our buildings back further from the street than the corner of that building. The site today is garden-style apartments. We've, we all know the site. We've, we've been to the site. Most of you've lived near the site and have visited the site. It's organized for vehicles. It's, it's an automobile-oriented development. It does not have much walkability. It does not have much connectivity, and we certainly think that redeveloping this property can, as Michael said, provide a lot of benefits for the town. The proposed plan organizes the site in walkable blocks in traditional kind of metrics of blocks that are two-hundred-and-fifty by about four-hundred feet. And on these blocks, all the buildings face the street to create good street edges. Interior courtyards are made in the residential areas for the residents and oftentimes to allow the public to come through and make the blocks porous. There are cars traveling on these roads, but they have parallel parking spaces. They have very low speeds, and the length from the student housing in the campus district on the left to the office building on the far right of this image is about twelve-hundred feet, which represents about a five-minute walk. In terms of the green space and open space, we've made a concerted effort to preserve most of the specimen trees along Route one fourteen by setting the buildings back seventy feet. And those are the trees that you see in the dark green here. There are other specimen trees on the interior of the site that will also be preserved as these sites are developed. In addition, there are over twenty-three acres of existing woodland buffer that will be protected as a part of this project, and all in all, we'll plant over eight-hundred new trees as these blocks are developed. I mentioned that we've divided the site into four distinct districts. The one furthest east is the mill district, and we'll talk about that first. Then we'll go to the center of the project and talk about the Town Center District. To the west is the Campus District, and then to the north at the rear of the site is more of a classic New England village that are, is organized around the town green. So the Mill District is, as I mentioned, the far easternmost part of the site, and here we've organized the buildings in long bars like historic mills in the area. As you know, this particular building type lends itself, when renovated, to loft-style apartments, and these historic mill buildings characterize a lot of the New England towns, North Andover in particular. And so we're going to create new loft-style apartments that really take their architectural clues from these historic mills. And as I mentioned, that is set back seventy feet, so we've kept that mature, green buffer against one fourteen, and then these buildings form nice edges. Out in front, in that seventy-foot buffer, is a new multimodal path for walking, for cycling, and a real benefit along that edge of one fourteen. If we move over to the Town Center District, there, the buildings take on more courtyard shapes. They have Ls that return, and again, we draw our architectural inspiration from historic buildings that characterize the town centers of the villages around here, Andover, Newport, Rhode Island, Hanover, and Salem. You see that the architecture here is characterized by sloped roofs, often with dormers in the attic. There are three, four, and five-story brick buildings. In our particular case, we started proposing five-story buildings. We now changed that and limited all buildings to four stories or less in this project. And they're predominantly red brick with punched window openings. They have articulated bases with columns and pediments, and some wood frame architecture, but predominantly brick. And so we've taken that architecture, and this is the architecture that surrounds the town green at the center of the Town Center Precinct. Again, a four-story building mass with punched windows, red brick, shutters, articulated bases to define the retail zone. This building here that we're looking at is on the eastern side of the town green and has small-scale retail shops at the base, and as you see, a signature clock tower at the corner, which marks the primary entry. You'll see that in the video in a moment. If we come across the town green and look at the hotel that anchors the northern end of the town green, you see that its architecture is very much derived from some of those hotels we used as precedent, the Viking Hotel in Newport and the Hanover Inn as well. We show you always the summer and the winter views because the site is heavily wooded. It will continue to be heavily wooded, and so with the leaves on the trees, you really can't see the buildings all that well. So we show you a winter view to take the leaves away and show you more the physical aspects of the architecture. If we continue to the west, there are eight-hundred-and-twenty-four new beds of student housing in three buildings. Again, all four stories. They're courtyard-shaped and L-shaped. The center one here, the large green space, is an existing wetland that will be preserved, and so we've organized the buildings around that existing wetland. Once again, we draw the architectural clues from New England historic academic campus architecture to my own heritage coming from North Carolina. I threw in one example from Chapel Hill there, but the architecture is very consistent with the articulated ends, often with double chimneys, the sloping roofs, the red brick, the shutters, the punched windows. And when we translate that architecture to the Student Residence Hall of proposed for Merrimack College today, the architecture is very reminiscent of that, and we think fits very well in the context of North Andover. The final district is the northernmost district, the Village, and as I mentioned in the opening, it's organized around a linear green space that is a community green space. This large footprint that you see here, this trapezoid, is a clubhouse that is a common room, a common amenity for the two-hundred-and-ninety-nine townhomes that are depicted here. These are attached townhomes like you see in the image to the left. They are two and three stories, three stories stepping down to two in most cases, and they draw their architectural inspiration from the wood frame architecture of single-family and multifamily houses throughout the region using cedar shingles, clabberds, very tight eve lines, sloping roofs, and again, chimneys to articulate the roof line. When we look at it from the town green, we feel like this linear green space is a great amenity for the two-hundred-and-ninety-nine families that would live.
One ninety-nine.
One hundred-and-ninety-nine, sorry.
An add-on.
One hundred-and-ninety-nine families that would live in this district. As you see, the townhomes are envisioned to be three stories with the sloped roofs that are attached. They are also broken up into walkable blocks. You'll see that in the video as well. So that's a quick tour through the still images. I'll switch now and show you a more animated walkthrough. Here, we're approaching Route one fourteen, and we're going to walk into that seventy-foot green buffer that is a combination of existing specimen trees and new plantings. All of the understory planting that you see here is new. The multimodal path is new. It meanders in and out along the seventy-foot buffer. And then on the right are the mill buildings of the Mill District, all new construction, but very much designed to recall the historic mill buildings, characterized by brick frames and large window openings that allow daylight into the interior of these loft-style units. So it does provide diversity within the multifamily and forty-B housing that we are proposing along here. As I mentioned, this path is wide and broad and very much a benefit for the town, benefit for the residents who live here for cycling, jogging, and walking your dog. Along the same sidewalk at the Town Center, we see the signature building on the corner with the clock tower, the small-scale retail at the base. The plan does call for a small grocery store, which is at the back corner of this view, diagonally across from the town green. And as we walk onto the town green, this is up against one fourteen. We've made, again, a concerted effort to preserve most of the tree screen that is there, but as we walk into the interior of the town green, it becomes more lawn. It becomes more open. We've shown it here, set up for a fair or a festival. It can host a myriad of activities, from passive recreation to more active events like this. You see at the northern edge of the town green, the hotel that anchors it and faces it, it's the signature hotel of the development. And then along the street, which is, is done in a brick paver and an elevated table like a wernhof, if you're familiar with the Dutch concept of wernhofs, hosts food trucks for festivals. It can be closed for block parties. And then coming further to the west, the Student Residence Halls are separated by this archway that opens up to that wetland beyond. The Student Residence Halls also have small-scale retail at the base, and here we're turning to look back towards the south, towards one fourteen and Merrimack College across the street, and then rotating around to look back across the town common or the town green. We'll cut here and go to the Village Center here, the long linear green space at the heart of the Village. The clubhouse is on our right, and then moving along the left are those three-story townhomes, of which there are a hundred-and-ninety-nine. And this, again, is a very walkable street. The blocks are, are cut, the cross streets are cut about every three-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred feet. There is parallel parking along the side to form a buffer against the sidewalk for the traffic as the cars go by. And again, very walkable sidewalks with small front yards that open to porches that open to the townhouse units. As we come down and we see one of the cross streets is a back street. There are front streets. We're looking at a front street, and then occasionally crossing, and then behind all these, there are back streets, and all of the parking, as you see there, are garage parking for the residents. It tucks under the two-story portion of these townhouses that then gives way to the three-story portion. And this last block is turned to face the preserved woodland on the right. We're going to cross the street and go into that preserved woodland. There are some wetlands in there that are preserved, and this is part of that twenty-three-acre buffer that goes all around the development. And the existing tree canopy in these wetlands is preserved. The understory planting and some new tree plantings will make it all the better for the residents, for town residents, and also residents who would choose to live here at Royal Crest. These paths meander through here. It can be a place where you feel totally separate, totally apart from the built environment in this, in this development. As you see, we modeled this as correctly as we could. We're walking through here, and we don't even perceive houses to the left that exist today, our new development to the right. So that's a quick tour through our proposal.
Thank you, John. So in conclusion, I'll briefly summarize why we believe the redevelopment of Royal Crest will be of significant benefit to the town. First and foremost, the current tired and outdated Royal Crest estates will be transformed into what we believe will be an award-winning, many-rich, mixed-use community designed by a world-class architectural firm, as you can see in the images that we just showed. It responds to many of the recommendations of the report from the Master Plan Implementation Committee, most notably the need to create more housing, create more affordable housing, and revitalize the Route one fourteen corridor. With the creation of ninety-seven units of permanently affordable housing, it will enable the town to exceed the ten percent minimum required by the state, protecting the town from future Chapter forty-B incursions. It will also meet the town's obligation under the recently passed Housing Choice Act to create zoning that allows for multifamily housing. It will include thirty-five units of senior independent housing. It will retain over forty-six acres of open space and construct over a mile and a half of walking trails. It will have a significant green buffer zone around the entire site, including the recent addition of a more than seventy-foot setback in buffer zone along Route one fourteen, thereby allowing the retention of many of the existing trees. It will consolidate the many hundreds of Merrimack students that already live at and are currently dispersed throughout Royal Crest into one state-of-the-art, fully-supervised and managed resident facility. It's been estimated that the current Royal Crest currently costs the town net of property taxes paid between five-hundred thousand and one-point-five million dollars. Conversely, our peer-reviewed fiscal study shows that the new Royal Crest will generate net new taxes to the town ranging from a conservative estimate of two-point-one million to as much as four-point-three million dollars annually. The property will be among the most energy-efficient and resilient ever built, limiting greenhouse gases by having all-electric heating and cooling systems and building envelopes that will significantly enhance to minimize thermal losses. We'll seek to reduce traffic volumes by promoting pedestrian and cycling alternatives and by establishing a direct link to two existing MVRCA bus lines. We'll have a state-of-the-art stormwater management and retention system designed to meet the runoff demands of a twenty-five-year storm event, significantly improving the existing drainage issues in the area. To conclude, as a result of the conversations here in Town Hall, in church basements, in living rooms, and on back porches, and on God knows how many Zoom calls, we heard how important it was to make sure the new Royal Crest fits into North Andover. We appreciate that suburbs do not want to be cities. Accordingly, we have scaled our plan down and back softened its edges. We believe we are responsible developers, and we want to be good neighbors. Lastly, and perhaps most importantly, I think the heart of what we are attempting to do here acknowledges that this Commonwealth in many towns like North Andover are experiencing a housing crisis. We have college graduates who are still living at home with their parents because they can't afford an apartment on their own. We have empty nesters living in big homes who want to downsize yet still be near their grandchildren, but can't find anything to downsize into. We have friends and family members, sons and daughters, who want to move back to the town they grew up in but can't afford the crazy housing prices we are seeing today. We simply have to build more housing if we care about this issue, and we need to tailor this housing to the needs of both young people as well as their grandparents. In addition to everything else, we expect this development to be, the new Royal Crest is, the new Royal Crest is designed specifically to help meet these needs. We hope you will agree. Thank you.
Could you just also give, the plan's gone through multiple iterations over the last year, year and a half. Could you give the current proposal for numbers of each different type of unit, as well as the retail space and the office space?
Yes, yes. So I'll just, I'll briefly summarize the changes since the last time. We were before the Select Board in August of last year. So we significantly increased the setback on Route one fourteen to at least seventy feet from the property line, approximately eighty-seven feet from roadway. The only exception to this is the signature building at the town green, which is closer to the road as a placemaking gesture, as you can see in the images that we showed. The student housing building is now set back one-hundred-and-forty-six feet from the property line, one-hundred-and-sixty-three feet from the roadway. We obviously are preserving most of the existing mature trees on Route one fourteen. The setbacks from the property line around the entire site are, in all cases, equal to or greater than that last plan that was before you. We've increased the amount of open space. We've extended the walking biking path through to the front of the site. The buildings on Route one fourteen, as you could, you could see, have been significantly redesigned since the last plan that was before you. All of, as John mentioned, all of the buildings are now a maximum of four stories. So we took it seriously, the concern about building heights, and we've reduced the buildings across the site in their overall heights. All of the buildings are a maximum of seventy feet, with almost all of them significantly lower than that. The only exceptions to, to a, a lower building height maximum are architectural placemaking elements at the hotel and the signature building with the chimney elements and the clock tower that you saw. We've introduced the district concept. And lastly, we did reduce the program again. If you recall, in August and from our original program, we had reduced the program pretty significantly at this, at that point. In this current iteration, we also further reduced the program. We reduced the student housing building by one-hundred-and-seventy-six beds, which was approximately forty, forty fewer units or residential unit equivalent. We reduced the townhouses by one from two-hundred to one-ninety-nine, and we reduced the, the office building in size by about fifteen-thousand-five-hundred square feet. I could get into the details of the total number of units, if that's appropriate as well.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I have it in front of me. So I have multifamily dwelling units, which includes both the market rate and the forty-B at a hundred-and-twenty-four total units. I have the townhouses at a hundred-and-ninety-nine. The independent elderly housing and concrete housing at thirty-five units. The dorms at two-hundred-and-six, and the hotel at a hundred-and-two rooms. Retail not to exceed approximately seventy-thousand square feet, and the professional offices at about a hundred-and-eight-thousand square feet.
That is correct.
Okay, so that is a summary, so, of the project. What I'll do now is I'll kind of give the Select Board and members of the public a update on where the bylaw stands and what the next kind of actions of Planning Board is going to be taken are. So the bylaw as currently drafted is a little different than some other zoning bylaws that we've had in the past. It takes from other ones and, but, but it's a little bit different. So normally, a zoning bylaw will just say what uses are allowed, what's not allowed, what the heights and setbacks are allowed, and basically say, okay, those are your rules. You can develop within those rules. This one is more specific in that it specifically lays out where all of the building locations may be. It lays out what all the uses may be, what all the nonuses are, as well as the height setbacks and things of that nature specifically. So Building A has to be where Building A is, is on, in the bylaw and on the map. Building B has to be where it is, and it has to be of the use as declared in the bylaw. So what it basically encompasses is the plan as presented today. So it's a mixed-use overlay district, allowing for residential uses, retail uses, office uses, and commercial uses. As I stated, they're all in the locations as set out on the map and in the numbers as maximumed as just, just described. There are several uses that are not allowed, and those are all in a chart. And basically, what would happen is that this would go, assuming it goes to the Board of Select, Select Board, and then you're going to send it back to the zoning board, I'm sorry, the Planning Board. It will go to Town Meeting, and the town will vote on this bylaw. If approved, the project doesn't just happen. What the next steps would be, if approved, there are specific projects within. We saw these different districts, and for each of these different types of projects, the applicant would have to come to the Planning Board to, once again, get permits for each of those projects, going through, does this meet the bylaws? If anything doesn't meet the bylaw, then there's an issue. It has to, and then we'll go through the setbacks, we'll go through the architecture, go through the plans, and make sure that everything is as proposed in the bylaw. If something is different than we've, in the bylaw, there are different stages based on how different it was, but really, if anything is of any significant difference, you would have to go back to Town Meeting to amend the bylaw. So if the hotel were to move, if a use were to change significantly, that would have to go back to Town Meeting. Small, small changes could happen through a public hearing process or a public meeting process, but anything of significance would have to go back to Town Meeting. The next steps for the Planning Board are to take a vote on a recommendation. We haven't done that yet while we've been conducting our public hearings. So we'll have a public hearing today and then a public hearing tomorrow. We may take a vote at that point. We also have to go through and see if this bylaw meets the new Housing Choice Act. So the Housing Choice Act has certain criteria. If those are met, then at Town Meeting it would be a fifty percent vote to pass rather than a two-thirds vote. So we have to go through, there's basically a checklist. If it meets A, B, C, or D, you know, there are a bunch of them. If it meets any of those, then it goes to the fifty percent. If it doesn't, then it's the two-thirds. So we have to just go through and check off to see which it would be. And so then it would come after a Planning Board recommendation, come to the Select Board for recommendation, to the Finance Board for recommendation, and ultimately for a Town Meeting vote. So that's kind of where we stand with the zoning. So I turn it over now to the Town Manager to tell us a little bit about development agreements.
That's okay.
All right, Ryan, so my, Amy and I are on the other side. So this is going to be tough. I'm blaming everything that happens today on daylight savings, and I'm sure everyone else is too. So we're just going to continue with that. My presentation's going to be a little disjointed because I didn't expect that I'd be giving this first to the Select Board, but we're going to roll with it, and it's going to be great. So I have a few recap sheets that y'all just heard, so we can skip along ahead of those. But we were doing a project recap, and we were going to review the January program. And this will be helpful later when we all go back and look this over again. So we'll keep that in there. Again, just a recap of the project changes, that twenty percent reduction in units, the increased setback on 114, all the things that we just reviewed. Just to kind of review of where we're going for Town Meeting. So currently, there's no project application before the Planning Board, and instead, the Planning Board is considering a zoning overlay that would enable a proposed development pending project plan review. So like Etan just said, any significant changes would need to return to Town Meeting for approval. Other changes would require Planning Board action. She talked a little bit about this earlier with the updated financial forecasts. Currently, the town receives about one point six million dollars in revenue from Royal Crest annually. Its tax assessment is about ninety-three point nine million dollars, has about sixteen hundred residents total. Approximately eight hundred of those are non-students, non-Merrimack students. As part of the Royal Crest analysis, we did have a financial study done and peer-reviewed, and that went through and figured out what our costs were for Royal Crest. So you can see that we have about five hundred and twelve calls annually from the police there and one hundred and forty-three calls annually from fire. They also made a determination on what it costs from Senior Center, Library, Veterans, et cetera. So looking at Royal Crest today, Royal Crest today is actually our largest taxpayer, interestingly. However, it does have a net negative fiscal impact. As you heard earlier, net negative four hundred and sixty-nine thousand to one point five million dollars a year negative. For proposed project revenue is six point seven million dollars in tax payment at full buildout with a net positive fiscal impact of two point one million to four point three million.
Can I just put a clarification? You say net positive fiscal impact, that's factoring in the expenses from the, that you highlighted previously, everything from police to schools and so forth.
Correct, that's after all of our town expenses.
But it's as of if the development was fully built out. So taking those same types of expenses and saying if this project went forward, what would be estimating the same proportionate amount of police calls and fire calls, and then looking at the added students and things like that.
So you all know I love development agreements because I think they're a good roadmap for the project. Not only does it lay out what financial benefits we will get, but it also is a commitment from the town and from the developer on how we're going to act and how we're going to treat each other moving forward. So we're going to look at two agreements tonight. The first one is going to be with Trinity and AMCO, and the second one is going to be with Merrimack College. So the first one we're going to talk about is the one with Trinity and AMCO. And obviously, the site is the current Royal Crest site. This agreement would only go into effect after the zoning is approved at the 2022 annual Town Meeting. Currently, what we have is a term sheet, which we memorialize into a larger development agreement before Town Meeting. That's consistent with how we typically do these, the same thing we did with the Amazon Agreement. So we get all of our terms down, and then we start battling out the way we're as non-lawyers. But we make sure that all of our terms are done and ready and committed so that we can start educating the public about the agreement. So we're getting a little bit into the agreement. So this one, this first one, is a water improvement. This actually came out of the water capacity study that the Planning Board asked the town to do. This would be five hundred and fifty thousand dollars paid to the town to put toward the purchase of the property on Great Pond Road. It would become to the town the issuance of the first building permit for the first development in the first phase. As you know, there are several phases to this project. It's a ten-year project, eight-to-ten-year project. This would fund approximately one-third of that acquisition cost of what we were willing to pay at this point.
Could you briefly explain the benefit?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Which property on Great Pond Road?
Sure.
And could you explain the benefit of what that would be for?
Sure, absolutely. It's 400 Great Pond Road. The issue with 400 Great Pond Road is that that property makes it so that we cannot raise the level of the water in the lake. So if we acquired this property, we would be able to raise the lake level, and raising the lake level one foot would give us one month's worth of summer water. So this was one of the recommendations, not only in the water capacity study, but also in the watershed protection study.
Yeah, the only, hold on, when I got it. I noticed that as Harbor Master, I was referenced in your letter, and I wasn't aware that I was referenced. I was one of the people who advocated to update the town watershed plan. And it does talk about increasing the capacity, but the watershed update does not do any study on the effect of the lake due to raising it one foot.
No, it doesn't.
So for example, erosion around the shoreline, undermining the trees whose roots are already exposed. And the example of along Great Pond Road by Butcher Boy. The DPW had to just execute emergency repairs for severe undercut erosion, which has been there for about six years. Raising the lake by a foot would expose new shoreline to those type of erosion effects. I'm not saying it can't be done. However, there's been no study, I don't believe, on what those effects would be to the entire lakeshore, encroachment on lakeshore property owners, and the resultant total cost to the town for dealing with those impacts.
So there's two separate studies, right? The watershed study did not talk to the lake capacity, right? The watershed study was a separate study that recommended that we acquire the parcels along the lake as they became available, right? So that was one of the studies. The other study, which was the lake capacity study, recommended the purchase of this property, actual property, 400 Great Pond Road, which is why I mentioned your name in it because you were on the watershed study. Sorry, I'm just going to finish what I was saying. We have spoken to DPW, but whether or not there are any other properties that would be affected by raising the lake one foot, they do not know of any other properties. There are times now when the lake does rise on its own. I have been in 400 Great Pond Road when that does happen, and the water is up over the stairs. And we do not get calls from any other property owners regarding that at this time but any other issue that they're having. Of course, we would study that further.
Right.
However...
But can I ask one point of clarification?
Yeah, sure.
I would agree with you that I don't think there's any other property owner structures that would be impacted. But all of the property owner's land would be impacted, especially those sections of land which are gradually sloping. And there's quite a few of them. So they would lose a portion of their property, which is probably an issue to them. The greater issue to me is the cumulative effect on erosion all around the lake for that portion of land which has never been exposed to wave action.
So I guess it would be a mitigation strategy that we'd have to look at moving forward. I don't know that we really want to debate this that much, considering where...
I guess the one point that I would make, because this isn't the right forum for that, is that there's more than meets the eye on this. This is, I think, a tough issue. I don't think that the study that was done, that was presented to the Planning Board was frankly very good and very complete, and I wouldn't hang my hat on that. So I think that, you know, again, and I don't mean to put you in a difficult spot, but I don't think there's consensus on this is a good idea. That's the only point, so.
I'll be sure to bring them back to DPW because this was their pet project, and especially coming from the water department.
So just so I can clear here, what we're talking about is a commitment of a half a million dollars to help us figure out how to best use and control our water.
No, it's to buy a property. That's different. It's not for a study.
There's a half a million dollars that we can negotiate to find a way to best...
Well, that's, maybe, if that were the case.
But I think that's the point here, and that's why we have a negotiating team. But let's not lose sight of the objective behind us, which is that there was a comment and there's been concern about impact to the town when it comes to water. We have a developer that says, that we've been able to bring to the table, says, "I'm willing to put a half a million dollars roughly towards addressing that problem." So is that fair?
Again, we're not negotiating the terms, but it may make sense to potentially broaden the terms to allow for it to go towards water capacity or lake infrastructure, or something that either allows us to buy the property or do a study, or something to help the situation. But the point being, we're not necessarily locked into buying it, but we're locked into doing something with that money that will benefit the watershed. Just maybe broaden it. Right. Just because maybe we do a study and it says it's fine, let's go ahead and do it. But maybe someone says, hey, actually, what Peter says is right. That's actually going to trigger something where we have to pay a million dollars. We don't want to take half a million to pay a million. So we might as well take the money and put it to something that's going to help, but figure out exactly what the right thing is.
Okay. So the second one is sewer improvements, which is fifty thousand dollars to pay to the town for sewer capacity analysis, as well as the redesign of the sewer flow, which could result in the elimination of the Willow Street Pump Station, which is a goal of the Sewer Department. The next spot in the development agreement is traffic. The developer will establish a traffic monitoring and reporting program to determine if traffic's consistent with the traffic studies. So at the a million dollars will be placed in escrow and held by the town at the issuance of the first building permit. Twelve months after the certificate of occupancy is issued at each phase of the project, the developer will give the town additional ten thousand dollars to conduct a conformatory traffic study. If the volumes of traffic are material in excess of those projected, the town may utilize the one million dollars from the escrow account for traffic mitigation. In the event that the funds are not used at the completion of the project or twelve years from the issuance of the first building permit, they'll be divided equally. So we have done this in other projects as well, or something like this in other projects as well. And basically, what this does is it gives us a safety net. So if traffic is worse than what we thought we were going to see, we're able to look back, and we have funds available from the developer in order to mitigate those traffic problems. In addition for traffic, we will have specific trip reduction goals and measurable initiatives. We'll have bicycle parking, half of which will be covered. And there is a metric laid out in the development agreement that lays out exactly how many bicycle parking spots there needs to be per unit. The developer will pay a population portion of the town's assessment to the MVRTA. There'll be two bus routes, one which connects the project to Andover or the Lawrence train stations, and one that has express service to Boston. The developer will become a member of the Merrimack Valley Transportation Management Association. You'll recognize some of these from the Amazon Agreement as well. For pedestrian safety, and this mimics a lot of the traffic safety, there'll be creation of a one million dollar pedestrian safety fund to be held in escrow by the town to fund pedestrian safety enhancements as recommended by pedestrian safety studies that are conducted by the town. There'll be pedestrian safety studies will be conditioned twelve months after completion and occupancy of the first phase, twelve months after completion and occupancy of the second phase, and after completion of the hotel, if that's not encompassed in the above two studies. So right now, the hotel is thought to be encompassed in Phase Three, but could be kind of part of Two Point Five. So we wanted to make sure we cover the hotel because that could relate. If any material pedestrian safety issues arise that require enhancements, the developer shall utilize the escrow funds, the one million dollars controlled by the town, to make improvements, including but not limited to crossing guards at peak times in design and funding of a portion of the pedestrian footbridge. Again, at the end of the project or twelve years from the issuance of the first building permit, if the funds are left, the developer and the town will split any remaining funds. For open space, the developer shall permanently restrict the use of the perimeter of its project as open space buffer vegetation and walking trails. The developer will fund a walking trail study for twenty thousand dollars to build connections to the common and to downtown. The developer will design, build, and maintain a walking trail for pedestrian access to the Franklin School. For community partnership, the developer has agreed to pay eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for parks and fields improvements and creations as dictated by the 2022 Fields Master Plan, which we are funding at this Town Meeting. There'll be five hundred thousand dollars for community policing initiative, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fund the Fire Station Two design, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars donation to the new Senior Center, two hundred thousand dollars for the Stevens Memorial Library Bookmobile, five hundred thousand dollars for the Design of the Youth Center Edition, three point five million dollars for the Franklin School Gym, increased classroom space and other improvements, and three hundred thousand dollars for our Downtown and Properties Improvement Grant Fund. For construction management, we will have a phasing plan, including a plan for displaced residents, a construction plan and a meeting schedule. Typically, we meet one every week or every two weeks for developments of this size. The developer has agreed to a per capita mitigation payment from the fifth year of occupancy to the tenth year of total occupancy. The developer shall make a per capita payment for every resident that exceeds the estimated number of residents in the fiscal impact report, which is two thousand eight hundred and sixteen. The per capita payment shall be calculated by dividing the budget minus local aid by the population of the town. Housing in other terms, in the event that any parcels other than the residence hall becomes owned by Merrimack College or any other tax-exempt organization, taxes must continually be paid by the developer for a period of ten years following the conveyance. At least fifteen percent of the net new units must be affordable and shall remain affordable in perpetuity. The developer agrees that it shall maintain a sufficient number of units to ensure the town meets the forty-B requirements at the time the permit is issued. We're currently hovering right around the eight percent spot. The developer is responsible for the town's obligation under the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act, which means that they will be responsible for paying any of our student transportation costs. This is a term sheet synopsis. You can see the total value of the term sheet, not including the walking trail for the Franklin School access, the post-construction mitigation payment, because I don't know what that will end up being, and also any improvements that are required by Mast Amipa, is nine million, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
It seems like two items have contingencies. The traffic mitigation and the pedestrian. Am I reading that accurately, that, you know, it's not just the grab of money, it's certain things don't happen?
Yes.
But all the rest of them, there's no contingency?
There's no contingencies in everything else, and it's pretty much all early on in the program. The Franklin School is in two payments, one point seven five and one point seven five. Everything else is really pretty early. The two contingencies, if there is found to be no traffic or pedestrian issues, which I hope is the case, we would still get five hundred thousand dollars because it would be split. If there is found that there is traffic or pedestrian issues, then the million dollars could be spent. It would just depend on what the outcome is.
Actually, I have just a quick question on the traffic study. So is the traffic study contingency dependent on just the parcel? Or is it also in relation to what's happening with Mast on 114? with Mast dot 114?
I mean, it's all pretty intertwined. So the traffic study, as you all know, takes in a lot of what the Mast improvements will be into account, so I think it will all be rather intertwined. But there is a metric that's been set forth, and those metrics will need to be set, and if they're not met, then a different additional traffic mitigation will need to be brought forward.
Can you discuss how these agreements get voted on? So you said that this is obviously contingent on the zoning passing at town meeting, but who votes on that? Is it a town meeting vote? Is it a select board vote? When does that happen? Could you just explain that?
Sure. So the select board votes on all of the development agreements. I always tell the story, and Rosemary will laugh at me, but I told her the story the other day that when I worked in Everett on the Wynn project, Revere didn't want to do a community development agreement because they really wanted the casino in Revere. And the casino ended up in Everett, and Revere didn't get a community development agreement, so they got nothing. And so I always encourage the board members that, you know, whether you're for the project or opposed to the project, if it's a good development agreement, vote for it. Because you don't know what's going to happen at town meeting, and you want to make sure you have your shoes laced and you're ready to go. So, you know, I think we have a great development agreement here, and I'm really excited about it and proud of the work the team has done. But we will have the select board voting on it when we're done here, because we have a lot going on upstairs. We're going to recess and go back upstairs, and they'll be deliberating.
And can you, I don't know if now is the best time or if we should do it when we have discussion, but I just wanted to have a discussion about, so one of the items was the money for the Franklin School, and just one of the things we've been talking about at the planning board is the fiscal analysis. So we talked earlier about the fiscal analysis. Now we have a new positive, but that positive assumes that we're just going to have to, you know, hire some new teachers and have some new pension liabilities and things like that, not reach some tipping point where we need a new school. So we've been talking about that. Now I see money for a school, and we've been talking about, well, where does it fit into all of the plans? So I don't know if-
Sure.
-related to that. Basically, if you could talk about where this particular money in the development agreement and then the facilities master plan for the schools ties in with that, as well as where we are based on the numbers of projected school, which we've gotten, and we've talked about it, I know we've shared with you in the schools, what that would potentially mean for our schools going forward.
Sure. Do you want to do that before we talk about the Merrimack agreement?
I think it flows nicely out of what we're talking about now.
So I have a lot of friends here.
Okay.
Okay. So I have Justin Humphries. He's our school numbers consultant. I also have Superintendent Gilligan and Assistant Superintendent Meili. And if we could invite them up, I think it would be great because they are much more eloquent when it comes to schools than I am.
Is that good with everybody?
Would that be okay? Okay.
Yeah, let's do that.
Bring them up.
And I will hop out of my chair and go back to my chair. I can talk.
All right. Thank you all. So I guess question, the big question is, where do we stand if if this project is approved? Has that been, what does that do to the state of our school enrollment, just numbers wise? Has that been planned for and accounted for, and if so, how? And, you know, should we be comfortable with our fiscal analysis saying the numbers that it says, or do we have to worry that this is some sort of tipping point? And how do these new students, let's say, you know, this all goes through and the multifamily is one of the first things on to be built, where do those students go? How does it get incorporated? And how are we planning for that?
Thank you for having me. Dr. Greg Gilligan, Superintendent, here with Dr. Meili, and this is something we've kept close track of over the years, any type of project or enrollment. And Dr. Meili's been dealing with enrollment projections and looking at all the studies. I want to turn it over to him to talk a little bit more about that question specifically.
Okay. Thank you.
So as we prepared the recommendation to the school committee for the facilities master plan phase two, we included in that our enrollment projections. We had two different independent studies done, and then we had a peer review of those two studies, specific to the Royal Crest project and what impact that could have on future enrollment. And so when we finalized our enrollment projections for the town of North Andover, it included the Royal Crest development and any other future developments if we were continuing to develop the way we have been. One of the things that we really wanted to do with this particular project was with, specific to enrollment projections, many of you have heard of the Foster Farm project way back when, it was just before I got here. And the projections that were done for that project had 1,000 more elementary students coming in the next 10 years, and that just didn't happen. And the problem we saw when we analyzed it was that they looked at a three or four-year period of growth and projected that growth to continue, and that just wasn't realistic. So what we did is we looked at a 25-year history, which has peaks and valleys in it, and you see the straight line slope of about 30 to 35 students per year has been the growth, and that projects to be from both the independent studies we had done and the peer review to look like the same type of growth, based on birth rates, based on developments. We anticipate 35 students per year for the next 15 to 20 years. And so that's what we've built into our recommendation, and the, specific to the Royal Crest project, it's already included. So the fact that it's higher, the amount of students projected is higher than what are there now is not an issue. And also, it's actually fluctuated quite a bit. It's been as low as 142 students coming from there, and it's been as high as 262 students coming from Royal Crest. So we've seen fluctuations within the current situation.
Dr. Meili, just a clarification. So that 35 is overall, all grades?
Exactly, exactly. So if they were, you know, consistently, you just would divide by 13 grades counting kindergarten, and you're not getting very many students per year. But 35 starts to add up, and so that's why we're building the capacity in that we're asking for in the facilities master plan phase two.
Thank you.
One thing I saw, you know, you had a, you look at Franklin School, for instance, in 2015, 2016, you had 494 students. In 2018, 19, you had 384 students, kind of to your point. So it goes up and down. And in general, though, I'm sorry, I don't have that number right at my fingertip, but if I recall, the actual total enrollment in North Andover schools today, or the past couple of years, is less than it was 10 years ago, 12 years ago. Is that not correct?
It's a little bit less. It's been pretty flat if you look at a 10-year period, but we do anticipate the same growth. And we've seen, you know, prior to that, you saw more growth than the 35 per year. That's the average, and that's what we're building towards. And the other part is that over the last couple of years, the state has seen a decrease on average in enrollment of about 4%, and North Andover is right around 2% during that same period of time.
So just, again, kind of knowing what the trend is. Okay, good. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Kelly, did you get a question?
Yes. Hi, Dr. Meili. So a question. So looking at the enrollment impact analysis that we've been looking at in the planning board, it stated that there would be an increase of 89 students at full buildout. So I'm just trying to understand how the impact analysis is saying 89 more students, that you're looking at 35. I'm just trying to understand how those two pieces of information work together.
So the 35 is an average per year. So you might, and we actually see a change, as Chris Nobley was just saying, from one year to the next of plus 100 or minus 100. It happens all the time. But you might see that, that 89 increase occur, and then no other developments happen in a three-year period, and you've averaged 35 students per year. So that's just the average over time. But like I said, also, Royal Crest itself has seen a fluctuation in the number of students coming from there of 140, from the least to the most.
So if I look at it this way, Kelly, if at the start of, if Royal Crest at the start of their project starts moving, some people might move out while they're doing demolition, so maybe the numbers go down a little bit. Then the multifamily and 40B get built first, so your numbers are going to start to go up, but it's not going to be all 90 at the same time. It's going to be over a course of three years. So maybe it's 30 a year, 30 a year, 30 a year. Now, for those years, the average is probably up higher than their 35, because you have that, plus whether there's single family developments or new kids are coming in, so maybe it's 50. But then you kind of hit that peak with Royal Crest, so now, you know, the over 55 and the dorms, and those aren't bringing any students, so those are zeros. So those years are going to be zeros because you hit your 90, and then that's going to lower the average students to about, you know, 20 or 25, something like that. So it averages out to 35 over the 10 years, and that 90 or 89 new from Royal Crest is kind of over a short period of years, which will change the average for those couple of years.
Right. And we've actually seen that kind of increase in a year, from one year to the next.
Does that make sense?
Not really, no. I mean, it's not how we've been talking about it. We've been talking about the 89 new students. I'm also trying to balance that as, you know, my day job as a mom with a daughter who's in the school program and knowing, you know, despite the school committee and the teachers and the administration doing amazing things, that our newest school is already at capacity with waivers for capacity problems. There's shower curtains separating places. Teachers are meeting in closets. And I'm just trying to understand how we're putting more students into the system, but we're saying that's going to be typical, and there's not, we're not seeing a big impact. Trying to put those two together and-
Well, yeah, from my-
So Kelly, I think the way I think of it is, you know, the 89 is probably a good number, but on average, it ends up being 35. So 89 may be coming in from Royal Crest, but we lose students in other districts and other areas and for whatever reason. So I think, you know, the average is 35. But I don't think the 89 is a bad number to continue to plan for, but I think it's just over, over time and over average, it contributes, but it, you know, the 35 becomes the norm going forward, or at least historically, and if that's any indicator of the future, then that's the way, you know, you guys have been predicting it.
The other part is that the first project, there's two first projects on the list are the middle school, which needs to be addressed, and Kittredge, a new Kittredge. There's a few reasons for that, one being the MSBA program and the fact that we are now in the eligibility program. The second part is the cost of that project and the fact that we decrease the impact of inflation by putting it up front. And the third part is that it immediately adds capacity of 200 student desks into our district for elementary students. And so I think that would address your concern, because timing wise, I don't think this project is going to happen in the next two or three years. It would be after we have increased that capacity.
The other thing is, you know, we're talking about the numerator, but the denominator changes, right? Because right now, if I look at this analysis here, it's in, this property is a negative cash flow, which means in essence, the rest of the community is paying for the students additionally. It doesn't carry the cost of the students today. So at a minimum, it will cover those students, if not put us in a positive. I mean, am I reading the numbers correctly? So from a purely self-interest standpoint, it reduces the rest of the community of subsidizing, if you want to look at it that way, and this project becomes self-caring for the students in it.
Dr. Meili, those numbers that you cited about the growth, is that in the facilities master plan? Could we just get a copy of that, so maybe we can present that, talk and have that in our hearing? Because it's not in our packet today. I think that would be just helpful for us to have. I know it's, I know it's somewhere.
So you're talking about the average growth?
Yes.
Yes, it was part of our, it's been part of our, all of our presentations and public forums. I can certainly get that to you.
Okay.
So I just want to follow up a little bit on, is this on?
Yep.
On Kelly's question. We're hearing about the historical average, 35 per year, 36, 35?
Yes, 30 to 35.
30 to 35.
Mm-hmm.
I think this is the largest, would be the largest residential development in the history of the town in North Andover. So I don't know if this is exactly Kelly's point, but I'm also having trouble why we're insisting on applying a historical average per year based on prior history when we're talking about the largest residential development in the history of the town that will add as many units as we have added in six developments since 2013 in one development. I don't see how a historic average, looking back, applies to that. And so my bottom line question for you is, will the additional number of students from the largest development that would occur in town history, will that put us over the top and require us to build a new school?
So the easy answer is no.
Okay.
And the second part is that we had to look at the delta, because there is an existing development there that has a number of students. And so even though this is the largest development, we looked at the delta.
I need to make a correction, not what you're saying, but what I said. The delta will be the largest development, single development in the history of the town, because you make a good point. We need to look at the delta, just the delta.
Right.
If you look at the number of units, 709?
No, no, but just the number of children, I'm talking about, we're talking about, just focus on the schools. Right. I mean, I would assume there, go back and look, there are, if you had new developments that came where there were no children before, you would get-
If you look at the number of developments since 2013, six of them, Princeton, East Mill, Foremanites of Columbus, Avalon, Berry Street, Merrimack condos, and you add up the multi-bedroom units, that's what you're talking about, because those are the ones we base on children, right? And compare that to the number of multi-bedroom units in this one development.
Okay.
The fact is, we're adding, just total number of units, not multi-bedrooms, we're adding 720 new units in one development, if it's approved.
Yeah.
And over those six developments since 2013, nearly 10 years, we added a total of 790 units. So in one development, we're going to add as many new units as we have in the last 10 years. That's a big change for the town in North Andover. So, Aton, I take your point. We should look at the number of multi-bedroom units, but I think that's the type of due diligence we need because of the scope and scale of this proposed development, which the town has never faced before.
No, I agree. I mean, I just think, I think it's good that it was already at least considered as part of the facilities master plan that's already moving forward. Where does that stand, actually?
The facilities master plan?
Yeah.
We are coming to town meeting with approval for design of the middle school in Kittredge.
Okay. And where would this, if this Royal Crest proposal bylaw passes, and then this development agreement is approved by the select board, and we have 3.5 million for Franklin School, where would that, would that change the timeline for Franklin School? Would that, or would you like to adjust that?
What it allows us to do is move up, Franklin Elementary School is the only school in the district that not have a standard size gymnasium. It's like a double classroom is what they have for a gym. So it allows us to move up the addition of the gym to Franklin, repurpose what is now the gym space to usable classroom or educational space, and do some other improvements. And the rest of that project would be further down in the plan.
Okay. Planning board question?
Yes. Just some comments. We've heard a lot about the difference, oh, are we still on schools or the development?
No, I think this was just for schools. We can come back to other questions.
Let's come back after the schools.
Okay.
Can I just, quick question, because we have our school capacity expert with us. So when you're looking for projections, right, in that 35 that you come to, it matters what type of units, correct? Like the studio, the one bedrooms, the two bedrooms, and what, who that will attract, right, and whether that will attract families. So the Royal Crest proposed has a high number of studios and one bedrooms, if I'm not mistaken. So was that all taken into consideration?
Yes, the breakdown is by multifamily apartments, multifamily 40B apartments, town homes, and then over 55 and dormitories, which don't include.
I'll just say that we have consistently seen that the formulas they use have been very accurate. And it's funny, because anecdotally, we'll hear people say, oh, it's going to be this many units, and do their own math and say, that's 100 students. But then when you apply the formula, it's 18. And if you look at what we have in those developments, it's pretty consistent with the formulas. And it's mostly number of bedrooms, whether it's market rate or 40B, and then location. Those are the three most important variables for those.
And not to put you on the spot, but with Berry Farm and Princeton Properties, did you, based on the studies, because those were done, and then they were- did you, based on the studies, because those were done, and then they were built, do you have an answer, like what came out of that? What was the reality of it?
Right, so for Princeton Farms, I want to say it was like forty-two, forty-three, and we're at forty-six students from Berry Farms. And for Princeton, which is the one up on the hill, right?
Yep.
Yep, the projection was for thirteen, and we're at eight.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just a question, did you use a demographic model to do your calculations?
For the enrollment projections?
Yeah.
Yes. Yep, the consultants did, yes. And somebody asked earlier, there's, somebody has put it up, thank you. There's the graph that shows from nineteen ninety, early nineteen nineties to now. And that, if you took a straight line, is about thirty to thirty-five per year.
So can I just clarify, just so I understand this correctly? So the major developments that Peter's talked about over the past however many years, I think the big ones here, that projection over the past ten years hasn't really fluctuated a whole lot with those developments in there?
Right, you can see some peaks and some dips over time. But it's a steady, if you just follow the slope, it's a steady thirty to thirty-five per year.
So we could assume that may, well, if we were to take, like Peter said, approximately the same number of units into going on in this projection, it seemed to be pretty accurate compared to the seven hundred, and I can't remember the exact number that you were getting over the past however many years?
Correct.
Maybe just a question on phasing. So there's going to be net new eighty-nine students as projected in that study on Royal Crest. So there's going to be projected eighty-nine net new students on the Royal Crest project. And I'm just curious, from Berry Farms and the Princeton Properties, like at what, like when you guys measured and had new people come into those properties with eligible students, what was, like, what was the phasing? And like, did they all come in at once? I'm just thinking, because we have a facilities master plan, right, that's going to kick off. And you could be a budding, you know, essentially eighty-nine net new students at the same time, you know, right before you finish your build out of Kittredge and the middle school. So I'm just curious on the phasing piece. Have you guys looked at that?
Yeah, if, what you mean is, how long does it take to ramp up to that number? It takes a little bit. It doesn't happen immediately. We saw, we've seen with Princeton, it was probably a couple of years before we got there. And then Princeton hasn't gotten there yet. I said Princeton twice, didn't I? Berry Farms, Berry Farms took a couple of years, and Princeton hasn't quite gotten there yet.
Got it. So there's about a two to three year kind of lag?
Yes, yes.
And I think they asked that, what is the actual development build out schedule?
Right, I mean, that's probably developed later, but it's not all coming at once, right? This project is going to be developed over a multiple years span. So maybe later you can answer that question, but what would that be? Because obviously, we're not going to, you know, it's not going to pop up out of the ground in a year.
Yeah, we don't know that one.
No, I know, it's for the developers.
Right.
Well, I can, so it's a phased project with six phases that last from projected construction of 2023 to 2031, and end with the townhouses on the north end of the site. So the housing is kind of within all the different phases, so it's a long process.
Right, it's about, from what they've told us, the planning board, about eight years of building and about a year to two years of demolition before that. So you're looking at eight to ten years.
So that's good to hear, because we definitely would have built capacity by then.
Now, the multifamily stuff would come at sort of towards the beginning. So you do your demolition for a year and a half, two years, and then the multifamily forty-B, that stuff comes first. Those are some of the first to come online, which is good for people that are living there now, so that they're not, you know, rerouted and displaced too much. But so your capacity is really going to build up there, your need in the years three to six, you know? Which actually, I think, yeah, I think works well with your timeline, but that's kind of to answer Mr. Valancourt's point. Okay, does anyone else have school questions? Thank you, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Do we have, so we're also going to get a question, we're also going to get a presentation about the Merrimack potential agreement. Do we want to do that first, and then come to questions? Yeah, so why don't we, Melissa, why don't we hear about the other, with Merrimack, and then we can, a bit after that.
I had that all set up for you, Jim. I was very proud of myself. Okay. So the next thing we're going to talk about is the Merrimack College Development Agreement. This will be a separate agreement between the town and the college. Sorry, I have many pieces of paper. Okay, so upon certificate of occupancy for the residence hall, Merrimack College shall make a one million dollar payment to an escrow account, which will be controlled by the town of North Andover. The college would prefer that the drawdown would happen in a manner of a minimum of ten years of drawdown. So they would like us to do a hundred thousand dollars a year, but they're not requiring it. The fund, they would like the funds to be used for investments in education, public safety, and/or town infrastructure. Not required, but that's what they would like to see. And we have to annually submit to the college a letter outlining how we spent the funds. A committee will be formed with Merrimack College, the town, and the developer to develop guidelines the town shall adopt related to noise and nuisance. Consistent with state law, the town and the college will enter into a memorandum of understanding regarding the responsibilities, communication, and reporting of all public safety incidents. All the residence halls, or the only residence halls at Royal Crest, shall have a responsible party on premises twenty-four seven, who shall be responsible for contacting appropriate parties in event of emergency. And all students will undergo a safe crossing training, and there'll be a section about safe crossing added to the handbook. For next steps, as with all of our term sheets, we will memorialize these terms in a larger development agreement prior to town meeting. And that is it.
Thank you very much. Do any of the planning board members have a question or comments about what we've heard so far tonight?
Thanks, Aton. And thanks, Melissa, that's an impressive development agreement. Is it correct to summarize that the town gets ten million dollars if this development goes forward?
Yep, about ten million, two hundred and seventy thousand, give or take.
Thank you. So we heard a lot from the developer about the difference between their initial proposal and the current proposal. What I didn't hear, and what I want to summarize with, I think, just three measures, is the difference between Royal Crest today compared to the most current proposal. And it is true that Royal Crest reduced the size. They improved the design. It's a pretty attractive design in the right location. And they're doing great, great work for stormwater treatment. I mean, of everything, that's a huge improvement. So what are the three measures between what's there now and what would occur under the most recent proposal? Square feet, the total amount of built square feet on that one parcel would go from a little over eight hundred thousand to two point seven million square feet. That's an increase of three and a third fold increase in the built square footage on that same parcel. What about daily vehicles? Now, one of the things the developer has said that I can't imagine wouldn't appeal to anybody, it's a great idea. Improve public transportation. Why wouldn't we want to do that? But here's, here's what I have a hard time getting my head around. The developer and the peer-reviewed traffic study examined daily vehicle trips from today to the most current proposal. It increases by three times, a factor of three. So today, where we have about forty-five hundred daily vehicle trips under the proposal, we'll have fourteen thousand. That's an increase of over nine thousand vehicle trips per day. I love the idea of improved public transportation. I don't understand how a proposal that will triple the number of daily vehicle trips at one of the most congested points in town is considered to be a path to improved public transportation. It's like marketing over the merits. It just doesn't make sense. Although, I'm an advocate of public transportation. It's just that this proposal won't get us there because of the tripling of daily trips. Third measure, residential units. And just to be clear of what I'm looking at, because there's probably a lot of different ways to count this. I'm looking at the number of residential units today at Royal Crest, which is about five hundred and eighty-eight. And the new total number of residential units under the most current proposal, the one where they reduced it. That's about thirteen hundred residential units. Now, on their chart, they have a separate section for the thousand beds for students. That's not included in this number. This is just, well, on your chart, I'm just looking at residential units.
The thirteen hundred includes the students.
So, here's your chart.
Make sure that the numbers are correct.
Here's your chart. Residential unit mix. You're correct, two hundred and fifty for students. I apologize. It does include students. Thank you for the correction. So including students, five hundred and eighty-eight to thirteen hundred, that is a two point two multiple in the number of units on the same property. It's an increase of seven hundred and twenty-one units. Now, what does seven hundred and twenty-one units delta mean for the town of North Andover? If you look at all the developments, the multifamily developments we've had since 2013, six of them, two were for about a hun, two hundred units each. That was Princeton and Berry Street. Two were for about fifty units each, East Mill, Merrimack condos. The others were in between, Formanites of Columbus and Avalon. The total number of multifamily units added since 2013 is seven hundred and ninety-nine. Slightly more than the number of units that we would increase by with this one proposal. Now, I've also heard about the housing crisis. I think we can all agree the state has that. I think we can all agree that, in theory, every town should do their part. I would tell you, having been on the planning board for a while, although not as long as John Simons, you get the record. Probably the most consistent feedback we have heard from the community for each of these six developments is, why doesn't the town take these new developments in the whole context, holistically? Instead of considering it one development by one development, why doesn't this town look at the cumulative effect over town, over time? How have we reacted to that? We have said, okay, we're now going to think about adding the same number of additional units in one development that we have added all told for the last ten years. I have to tell you, it runs counter to the most consistent feedback we have received at the planning board, in my judgment, for all of these separate developments. We're doing exactly the opposite of what the community has told us as we've gone from development to development. I'm almost done. When we talk about the housing crisis, our ten-year record in the town of North Andover is strong. We have contributed to adding housing for our part of the Commonwealth. Not once, not twice, but six times over the last ten years. We have done our part, and we should continue to do our part. But if we approve a proposal for adding the same number of units that we've added consecutively over the last ten years, we would no longer have any reason to say no to the next development, which would be just as large. Why bother with fifty or two hundred? Just do another eight hundred. I have been wondering over the last year, what's the benefit to the town? And I don't mean this in a critical way. I think I now understand. I think it is the development agreement. It has a lot of appeal. It's going to fund ten million dollars worth of projects for the town. That's a lot. Is the ten million worth putting a development that's unlike any the town has ever seen and would be the largest single increase in town's history? That's the question. And I think different people are going to have different answers. But I do think it's important we compare what's there today with what would be there, even with the reductions taken into account. So it's a very impressive development agreement. Those are the three big measures, and it's a big change for the town. Thanks, Aton.
Thanks, Peter. So the next part is going to be a discussion on the board. So I, one of the reasons we wanted this, and requested to have this joint meeting is to hear from the select board, because oftentimes, you have different constituencies that you're listening to and different thoughts from different perspectives in the planning board. But I just, just to Peter's point, I think you asked the right question, but I think there's more to it than just the development agreement as a positive. That is certainly a potential serious net positive. If we're just talking about financials, we also have the two to four million of additional tax revenue. So that's just financials. But I don't think it's just a financial thing. I think we've heard as much from people who are not necessarily in favor as those who are, that it would add different housing choices over fifty-five. Affordable housing, putting us from eight percent to over ten percent, adding about a hundred units of affordable housing. Not only affordable housing that hasn't been part of many of the projects that we've had, unfortunately. And hopefully, we're going to address that with our inclusionary zoning bylaw to try to at least get some more going forward. But that puts us from eight percent, eight percent to ten percent, giving us more control in the future, over future projects. The, again, the mixed use, a type of mixed use. This is one of the types of plans that is being more favored throughout the state. And I think it's a really good use of space to have something that is mixed use. Again, you talk about ten years of developments. This one would take eight to ten years. So really, you're taking what's been happening for the last ten years and then equating it over the next ten, right? But instead of doing it in eight different projects, which they could do, right? They could separate it and do it in six different projects instead of one at a time. And one of those might be a forty-B, and one of those could be a Merrimack dorm. And then that could happen, that still could happen. And we don't necessarily get all the benefits of the development agreement if it happened that way. It may not happen that way. If it doesn't go forward, nothing could happen. There's a whole range of possibilities. But it is a much scarier prospect when you take this big thing and it's all this, and it's all or nothing. That is tough. But I'd say, looking at it as these six projects that could come forward altogether, and we're actually dealing with it in a better manner by planning ahead. So I just think those kind of points are just important to address. But I think your question is right, is do we take the potential net negatives of, you know, some people may say more density is a negative, some people may not. But everyone's going to say traffic is a negative, and that is for sure. So do we take that net negative? Do we take whatever impacts there are to the neighbors, and those, I think, are a significant consideration? And then weigh it against what are the benefits of the town financially, housing choice, tax revenue, inclusivity, things like that, and weigh those all out, and that's what we're voting on. So I think I agree, and I think that's, I think that's what the town's going to vote on. And I think that's kind of the thing we'd like to definitely hear, questions or comments from the select board about what you've been hearing, what you guys are thinking in terms of, how do we weigh out those potential negatives? How are those mitigated by this potential development agreement? And what do you think of all the positives? So that's, love to hear from any of you guys.
So I cannot speak without, because Peter didn't break it up here. Oh, sorry, presenting your case and your facts and your passion around it. And also, to the town manager, thank you so much for the development agreement and working so hard to get to this point. So I think some of the things that we also need to consider is that, you know, Royal Crest, as it sits today, is an aging property, right? It's got its issues in the buildings. The buildings, I've heard, are mold-filled. I don't know, this is anecdotal. I've heard you said, you know, one of your constituents. It's a property that was at one time a crown jewel in this neighborhood, in this town, but has really deteriorated over time due to either a lack of maintenance or whatever reasons. For whatever reasons, it's not where it was, you know, at, in the early times of the project, the seventies, the eighties, whatever. John, you might have been one of the provers of that project. I don't know. I don't know.
No.
All right. That was just a rip. But I think, you know, this project addresses, you know, that aging property, gives it a new life. I think it creates, we've talked a lot about the, and rightly so, about the number of units, and I've been, you know, on the team from early on, working with the developers, and my position has always been, we have to reduce the density, we have to reduce the density, we have to reduce the density. They listened, and they did come back with significantly reduced density over time and different designs for the projects, for the buildings. So, I think they listened. And finally, I think it's where we want it, you know, based on the master plan. We've talked about development in this town, and where we want this type of development is on these major roadways, on 114, on 125. This is where we've decided that we want it. Oh, my point about the units is that we've talked a lot about units, but we also, you know, we need to consider that the retail and the business aspects of it, and making it become a destination, someplace for people to go. It's, you know, with the shops and office space, it also becomes that, a destination. So, those are some of my thoughts.
Well, I thought the design that you presented was really rather attractive. I can't say that it wasn't. The only thing is, and I'd like you to send me a copy, I'm still trying, I was still trying to figure out, well, where is 114 in this point? And I'm, you know, it's, that was kind of an important piece for me. I've been saying it all along, and I haven't been shy. This is one of the main roads in the town of North Andover. And the amount of traffic, and the way people are going to be trying to get around that traffic means they're going to be cutting down Mill Road, Hillside, and then they're going to be dispersing to Chestnut Street, probably even going up Sutton Hill Road. The traffic, people trying to avoid the traffic, they are going to be dispersing into the neighborhoods. For me, this is a quality of life issue. Glad to hear that Dick was, you know, proposing that we got to cut the density, we got to cut the density. It's just, it's the size and the scope of the project that is, it's just tremendous. And yes, it's, as you said, these developments should be along places like 114, but not right in the middle of all this congestion. I'm also particularly fearful of, and to Melissa's credit, we're trying to do some pedestrian crossings and things like that. I just think that it's so attractive that the kids are going to be crossing over whether they live in the dorm or not, because there's trails, there's restaurants, there's all this fun stuff going on, and I really worry about that crossing all the time. If it were up to me, the first thing that I would do is I would, I would have, as many colleges do, have a black wrought iron fence with one entrance, so that they can't be cutting in different places, that it's also would be a safety issue for not only the kids on the Merrimack side of the campus, but it keeps the crossings in a limited position. I've been saying that all along. It's not that it's not an attractive project, I just think it is going to affect the quality of life of the people of North Andover a great deal. And I do agree with Peter's numbers. It's a lot. It's a big, big project. And so, I still need to see some more changes. I think Melissa did attack some of the main issues. I think there needs to be tweaking, it's kind of a generalization. I think I'd rather see some more specifics, that is all part of the agreement, it wasn't supposed to be all done tonight. But I have real concerns, and I hear it all the time. People are, they're very concerned about the quality of life of this town. We only have a couple main roads, and this really is the main road that goes from Middleton to Lawrence, and there's going to be how many lights between Market Basket and, say, Mill Road? A lot. It's a lot. And people are going to be trying every which way to get away from it. Sometimes things, quality of life, is worth more than money that would get dispersed amongst all the taxpayers. So, I still have a ways to go, but I don't know that I'll ever really get there, to be really honest with you. I think it's a, unless you cut, it's the size and the scope, unless you cut it way down, and maybe it just doesn't work for you then. Your turn.
So, we've got one more, one concern.
First of all, thank you to Melissa and the team who worked really hard to come to terms with that development agreement. We really appreciate your efforts. I'm curious, I have one question. We've talked a lot about the number of units. Can anybody remind me the number of residents that are currently there versus the number of residents? Because I know there is a change in how the units are broken down. So, just, you don't have to do it right now, but for curiosity.
There's currently 1,600 residents?
Okay.
About 800 of them are not Merrimack students?
Okay.
And there is going to be 2,816 residents, based on the fiscal impact study.
Okay.
So, I've got a different number.
Okay. What do you have?
The developer can help us reconcile this, but when I look at the number of residents, I agree that it's currently 1,600.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe I'm wrong with this, but I thought the proposal, the latest proposal, is projecting 3,500.
I don't think so.
I'm taking it right off this chart here.
It sounded like the difference is the students. Were you including the students and you were not? Are you including and you're not?
Gene's like, we just went through this.
The students is another eight, about 1,000, but there's already, what, 400 there?
There's already 800.
So, in your 3,500, Peter, you were not including the students?
Right.
I think he may be including the total population, including the hotel, because originally that's what I did, and then Gene had me back them out.
So, we're talking just the residential?
Just the residential.
So, that's correct. If you take out the hotel.
In the office.
It drops it by 185.
Right, and we're not including the students, because this is just, this is just the residents, which is the 2,816.
Right.
We can check the number. Gene and I checked it twice, because we had it flagged in the presentation, so we checked it the first time, and we flagged it again and checked it again. We'll make sure it's right.
Yeah, it does, you know, how those people are broken down does make a difference.
So, a lot of things about this plan are consistent with what we want for our master plan. As other people have said, it does help to start to address the housing crisis that is being experienced across the state. One thing that I hear often from people is, we know something is going to happen in that space, right? So, why wouldn't we, as a town, work hard with the developers to make it something that is most beneficial to us? There are many things they could do in that space that wouldn't require our approval even. So, as far as I'm concerned, it's important, like we have done, to work with them to make it as beneficial as it can be to us in the long run. So, maybe it's not perfect, it's not in its final form. Again, tonight for us, it's really all about, we don't want to go forward without a development agreement, because if this passes that town meeting and we've said no to a development agreement, that is not in our interests at all. So, there is a long way to go for this plan to be complete, and I have seen the due diligence that is happening along the way from all parties, and I know and expect that that will continue. Honestly, for the most part, I hear people are concerned, traffic is a big issue. Again, part of the development agreement does account for that, and I think there's more work to be done to reassure people about what that's going to mean. But overall, I would say I hear people are excited about the prospects of this project. So, it's pretty interesting to see the difference across the town, so.
I think all of the schools, the traffic, and water, those are the big things that I've heard.
Yes.
You know, if you want to talk about what I've heard, those are the big issues, always. Sorry, Chris.
So, again, I want to first actually thank the planning board, because we have this forum to have the discussion, and obviously, you know, Melissa, this third negotiation in a couple of years. The last two, between Amazon and Stevens Estate, went really well, so I think there's a track record here, and I appreciate that. Two things that I sort of have learned, you know, a lot of hard lessons in life, but two things I've found are kind of hard to change, geography and time, right? We can't change the geography of this town. We are laying out the way we're laying out, right? We're kind of split up with different centers, 114, 125 cuts our town, those are the main thoroughfares. That's the way we are. We can't change it. We'd like to have sun 365 days a year and 80 degrees, we're not going to have that. Time's the other thing. Fact of the matter is, we're at a time. We're going to be, somebody's going to be looking back at this decision and what we did in this community 30 and 40 and 50 years from now, the way we're looking back at Royal Crest today. And I would go back and say, what were people in this town thinking about when Flatley came in and said, by the way, here's what I'd like to do with this kind of plot of land, you've got this little college over here, I'm going to put up the biggest project, there's nothing even close to the size. I mean, was there anything in this town that was more than 100, 150 units? You're talking about something that was incrementally gargantuan, and the impact it had on this town, the number of homes it provided, the number of children that were educated there. We're at the same point here. Now, again, those folks that lived in the town 50 years ago, saw their community of 15,000 or 18,000 people, and I'm sure, hard to imagine it today, if you think back to those folks that were living in this town in '70 and '75, to think about a community that has 30, 32,000 people. I would venture to say very few people had any picture that we developed to this point. But that's the reality of time and the clock, and it's also the reality of the geography. We have an opportunity here to leverage both of those to our best advantage. And I look at this agreement, and I check those things off, as you say, Dick and Janice, you know, we're looking at water, we're looking at the schools, we're looking at fire, police, youth center, senior. These are all things that intersect when we do, when we grow as a town. We have the opportunity, as you said, Aton, to literally in one fell swoop, do a whole bunch of things for this town. Create affordable units to the degree we've never had, a chunk of those. Create a place for folks who want to stay in this community but don't want to have the big home. They can stay here. We create these sort of opportunities for people to stay connected with our community. And then you add to that the commerce that we're looking to put in there, and the partnership with Merrimack College. The reality is that if you look at our community connecting with Merrimack, we're behind the curve in terms of how small colleges connect with their towns, and we have a great opportunity to do that and leverage for the two of us. And at the end of the day, Royal Crest is where the opportunity is on Route 114. There just isn't another space when you put the geography together. So, I guess I look at this, and I would ask you to also think about one other thing. We're talking about density and 76 acres. So, let's put a pin where we are in the senior center, and let's figure out what 76 acres is around here. How many units are here? How many people live within the 76 acres around this place, where we are right now? I guess there's probably more than 3,000. I'm just taking a stab at it, but isn't this basically precinct one? And how many folks are in each precinct? We have, right, we've got, we have eight precincts, right? We have 25. Yeah, 4,000. So, we already know that just within, there's over 4,000 people already. So, we're talking about fewer number of people, but also think about what the folks living in that kind of density get. They get a green space that folks in, that live in 76 other acres around this town don't have. They're going to have green space, they're going to have walking community space, they're going to have new commercial opportunities in there, and they're going to be able to have their children literally walk to the schools. One of the things that, from my time on the school committee, was people said, we want our children to be able to walk to schools. You pull that all together, wow. Yeah, I get it, it's not exactly what we want, like any negotiation is never perfect, but we are identifying the geography and the time, I think, to its maximum potential with this, and I really appreciate the work done on this. Yes, there's some hammering out to be done, but thank you, and I'm very supportive of what we've got here.
So, I just want to take a minute and thank Melissa and our town staff, because there are years, years of work and negotiations that have brought us to this point. Gene, we know, we know. And to the planning board, I want to thank you guys for inviting us here and for all the work that you've done, because there's been, I believe, 32 hearings, public hearings? Is that the right number?
We've had 32 meetings between the planning board, CONCOM, and ZBA about Royal Crest since 2000.
And I'm sure you guys are tired of hearing about Royal Crest at this point, but you guys, I know that, we know how much work you guys, and how much time you put into your meetings, and that's what's brought us to this point. And Royal Crest is, it is a turning point, and it's a, where three things are going to come together, right? Facilities master plan two, the corridor, and Royal Crest, and I think it does bring a lot of positives to the town. I know the butters, that's drainage, and you are addressing drainage. I've talked to people on CONCOM, it will increase the conservation. It makes big strides to what is there today, and it really addresses the affordable housing, and it is a housing crisis in this state. People want to live here, people want to live in North Andover, that's not a bad thing. The jobs are here, people want to work here, people want to live here, people want to go to school here. And I agree, the traffic is, that's what I hear about all the time, but MAST D O T is at the table, and we are going to, we, that's our job to work with the developers and with MAST D O T to make it right, and we have contingencies in the development agreement for that, and for the pedestrians. And I, as a mom of two young boys, I, and Janice and I have had lengthy conversations about it, we worry about those students crossing back and forth from Merrimack College. And again, there's a contingency in the development agreement to address that, and I hope that Merrimack, they're here and they're listening. And I also want that relationship with Merrimack to be strengthened with our community, because you are here, you're a big part of our community, and it's beneficial to all of us to be good neighbors and good partners and working with each other. So, I am in the construction industry, I see this going all the time. It's, this is, what's going up is this mixed use to create the more housing, because we don't have the land. We can't, we just don't have it in Massachusetts, and we're going up, and you guys have listened to the concerns and have made modifications, and we've got a long road ahead of us, but I appreciate the development agreement. I think it touches on so many important issues and touches really everybody in the community, and we will see benefits, and we have still things to talk about, but I think that's it, I think, for me, for right now. Is there any other questions from our board to the developers or to the planning board?
I have one question. So, we'll call it the Merrimack side of 114. There is 34 acres over by the Y. Why aren't you using that and at least keeping the students from crossing back and forth as much?
Thank you, Sean. You hear me? Oh, there we go. Hi, my name is Jeff Doggett, resident of North Andover and executive vice president of Merrimack College. I thank you. As the planning board knows, I've not only stated that the college does have the land to build this property, we actually have the land, we have the financial resources to do it. The planning board actually, in the fall, actually saw some designs as to where it would be, because that's where we were headed. And five years ago, the president and the board and myself, we did have conversations, just as several of the select board members had said, how do you build a better relationship? And from our perspective, it was actually pretty simple, right? We had a unique moment in time. We had a unique moment in time, right? And that unique moment in time was this. We can either pull all the students out of Royal Crest, empty what is now a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty units, that will eventually just go back to families with kids, we're eventually back in the school system without any additional tax revenue if the project doesn't go forward, build on our property, which will only be another physical barrier and another wall that will create even less interaction between the campus and the community, or seek out Aimco, which we did, I did specifically, and say, look, we have a really unique moment, we're going to let you leverage the college's growth. What can you do on the site? There's plenty of things going on in this town that we, that you could be helpful with. Forty B, more tax revenue, retail, use us, because if you don't, we're just going to leave. We're just going to go back onto our land and we can do it. And I have to be honest, we could have do it a heck of a lot cheaper for the institution, right? We're spending roughly three to three and a half million dollars a year in rent. By the time this is built, the college will have given to Aimco more than fifteen million dollars. Just think of what that would have been if we had just kept it and built on our own land. But we think that was investment was worth it. Like all of us, we wouldn't want to be here for five years, but that's what we felt was a really good opportunity. And if it turns out, in all honesty, that the town says, it just isn't going to work out, that's fine. The college will be fine, we'll go build right back on the property, we'll do it right on the corner, right in front of the church, just as we had said. I think it would have been a moment that's lost, because I think at the end of the day, people will look back twenty, thirty years, and they'll say, how come Royal Crest couldn't have been more? And the answer would have been, well, once the college started building the wall itself off, there'll be less, right? And I agree, right? I've stated, I agree. We are one fourteen, our entire front is to one fourteen. Most of our employees, especially those that live in North Andover, will have to cross one fourteen. I am one of them, right? Would we like there to be less traffic? Sure, we all would, but not at the expense of what could be this great opportunity, just to be able to have this moment where we could actually leverage what we do and how we do it, right? And so, yes, you're exactly right. And there were plenty of people who will say, Merrimack is crazy to have spent all this money, Merrimack is crazy they could have already built it, we wouldn't be here right now if they had, and that's exactly true, right? That's actually, for me, the point of pride. I don't know if we would be here right now if we didn't delay and offer ourselves up for this opportunity. So, so yes, I've always been honest that we could do this on our property. We see this as a way to build a financial bridge that can actually help build something that's better for North Andover, and ultimately, North Andover will make that decision, right? All we could do is provide the opportunity, and if North Andover decides that this isn't the right one, that's okay, right? Then we can go and seek another alternative. But from our perspective, we thought it was worth it to take this risk and take this opportunity, and I'm just quite honestly happy that we're all here talking about it in this way, it's so close to the end, to get to town meeting, because I think, I think this is the time. And I think we will otherwise look back on it and wish that we had taken more of an opportunity.
I appreciate you taking time to answer that question, answer it so honestly. I think, again, it's just the sheer size and the scope of this project, that, I'm not going to go over it again, but it is, it's the main road in and out of town, it's just not people who are at Merrimack College, they're coming from Middleton down to Lawrence and back, and then they cut over to one twenty-five, but it's, it's a lot. It's a lot for the neighbors to absorb, the people trying to get to work, so forth and so on, so.
I, I, I will have to say, obviously, living in the town, I hear a lot about it.
You see it, yeah.
Right? I hear the pros and I hear the cons.
Okay.
From soccer fields to going to get food, right? I understand and appreciate, and again, I always go back to where we started. From Merrimack's perspective, we said, what is going to happen when we pull out of Royal Crest? What is the opportunity to leverage Merrimack's growth to be able to help with that? By their own admission, right, it's an old and tired place, right? And we thought this was a unique moment in time, that once if we go and build our building, right, that's not going to happen again, right? You know, you don't, you can't endlessly grow in this market for undergraduate housing, so this is a pretty important moment for us. And again, I respect deeply the differing views, and from our perspective, we think this is the right thing, we are the largest abutter, we will be impacted by all the negatives. Yes, we do win on the positives as well, but from our perspective, this was not necessarily a how do you solve a Merrimack problem, it was how do you use Merrimack for an opportunity to explore something bigger than just the college.
Can I ask, sorry, just in response to the select woman's question, just because I don't, not sure I heard you actually answer that one part of it, you cannot use the lot across from the Y because you're using it for retaining pond, right?
There is enough, I could, the college could build enough for this thousand, but the twenty-four acres that is back there is not all developable land.
No, and I realize that, but, but the retaining pond also can be moved, and there is opportunities even to deal with wetlands, I mean, so I.
I will, I appreciate that, I would just say, that's in another town, I'm not sure they would agree with that.
I get your point.
But I would, I would be very happy for you to represent both towns, that would be fine with me. But I, but it is, again, as I have always stated, there is sufficient land on the college currently owns to build the project, there's just no way to leverage that project to do something bigger than the college itself.
Thank you, Mr. Boyne, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss that answer.
Okay, now, all right. Jeff?
Yes.
Thank you. I just, I have to ask you this question. It's one thing for Merrimack to conclude that this is the right thing to do, to partner with the town for your solution. I think I can understand that, and I think it's a generous and noble idea of the college. But is that the same thing as when you said it's the right thing? It's the right thing to partner with the town, or it's the right thing for us to have a development of this density? You're saying both are the right thing?
Both, yes, both.
Interesting.
Yeah, both.
While we have you, can I just make one point on the development agreement?
Sure.
I appreciate it, I think it's a strong agreement from both, but I think there's one part that just kind of caught my eye, which was, develop guidelines that the town shall adopt related to noise and nuisance over at Royal Crest.
Mm-hmm.
I feel like you guys should do that anyway, like with the town, like regardless of whether this goes through or not. I mean, that's a great thing to put in the development agreement, but that seems like an easy one. That's one of the biggest concerns that people have right now, it's not going to change over time. So, again, sort of out of my lane here, but.
No, no, it's, it's fine, I would just, just say this, I agree with you, but the college won't be the owner of that entire property, right? You've got the park, you've got in front of the hotel, you've got all those areas, that's why, and from our view, it's not just Merrimack and the town, it's Merrimack the developer in the town.
Understood, but there can, there at least can be something, a committee just to work on problems would sound like a good idea just to have, whether this goes forward as this, whether it goes forward as a different, whether, it just seems like a good idea, might as well, you know, seize on the momentum.
The biggest thing with flashpoint related to this project is about is what people think, right, I can be what's going on there today.
His point was that Merrimack dorm is one of the biggest flashpoints, and I would say, I agree, right, obviously, I've been to all the meetings, but I would also say that what exists there now, right, one of the reasons there is a community concern about, is the mixture of having in those buildings right now, which are only six or eight units, some mixture between young families, elderly, college students, and at least this would segregate them. That may not be enough for everybody, and I, again, I appreciate that. It would obviously be easier for some folks if it were on the Merrimack side of one fourteen and on the campus. I can't deny that. The town meeting may bear that out as a final solution, but at the end of the day, there is also a ramification for that, and in this particular case is, that's a lot of units are going to come on, onto the open market, and again, that's an Aimco and Town issue at that point, but as a person who has someone in the, in the public schools, to know that we could in essence be backing our way back into agreeing to another hundred and fifty-plus units that are going to go back onto the market, and the impacts those would have on the schools is actually pretty significant.
Other questions, comments for? Okay.
I just have a question, and I don't think it's free, I don't think you'll be able to answer this. It actually has to do with the fact that the, you need a thousand beds, right, or eight hundred and twenty-four, right? So, whether it gets built at Royal Crest or it gets built across the street, that impact will be in the traffic, right? We'll see that no matter what, and that, when they did the traffic study, I suppose, did they take that into account if, that we've got, you know, eight hundred beds on the Merrimack campus, and then some sort of development across the street? Does that, my, does that make sense?
So, the traffic study doesn't take into any contingencies for Merrimack building anything else across the street, it just looks at this project?
Right. So, but no matter what, we're going to see eight hundred beds, whether it's on this side of one fourteen or the other side of one fourteen.
Correct.
And then whatever, whatever's going to go in, whatever, whatever goes in place of that, so.
I mean, yeah, one of the difficulties we've had is trying to, to discuss contingencies and, and what other things that could happen, right? Because that would lead to increased traffic, but at the same time, we have the Mass DOT project that's going to go on no matter what, whether this goes forward or not, so there will be increased capacity. So, all of these things, to an extent, sometimes, you know, it's good to talk about, but sometimes they're just things that are going to balance out over time that we don't have too much control over, one way or the other. Okay, so, I think the next part.
I have another question for Melissa, but none of others do.
No, I.
Just, again, the development agreement's very impressive, a million dollars for traffic mitigation if there's a problem. It, it does come across as serious commitment and very impressive, but the more I think about it, I'm not sure what you could do for traffic mitigation, even a million. There's many, many studies for cost of road improvement, there's a 2016 study for Massachusetts for non-rural roads that estimate three to five million dollars per road mile. That's about a half-mile frontage, roughly. The DOT one fourteen project provides for no road widening in front of this development. There is road widening further down on both ends, and they're going to change the sequencing of the traffic lights, but that's pretty much it. If there is a traffic problem, what could we do with a million dollars to change anything once it's all built?
Yeah, a lot of the time, what I've seen in other projects is adaptive signalization. I know that's in this project already for some lights, but you may, what you may consider is adaptive signalization further out, in outside of the project scope, because that could alleviate some of those kind of lynch points that you're seeing. You know, I had a lot of success with a project once where we kind of took our scope way outside what you would think of, and looked at different intersections that were seeing a bottleneck due to a problem, so I think that adaptive signalization on the outside could help. You may see signalization issues in other areas, you may see, sometimes we could even have to use it for police presence. We've seen that implemented in other projects. You could see road widening, you could see addition of another turn signal that could be funded with that money. I mean, that, I think the.
It's not enough for road widening, not based on that 2016 study.
Not in that area, yes, not in that area.
Right.
I think, yeah, I mean, it's a really good question, Peter, I think you'd also have to consider if there, to use it towards ways to incentivize people to not have cars at the project, right? So, we're going to give you, you know, T passes, we're going to give you months off your rent, we'll lower your rent by a certain amount.
Now, you're talking about recurring operating funds, and how long will that pay for?
Understood, understood, but I think, I think, to your point, I think it would have to be creative, depending on the size of the issue if there were.
It could be an improvement on one twenty-five, that you, outside of the scope of the one fourteen project, but something on one twenty-five that would improve flow on one twenty-five that would open up one fourteen.
I know you have a lot of experience with examples, my only point is this, a million bucks sounds like a lot, but when it comes to, after it's built, traffic mitigations on that section of one fourteen, it sounds great. We can't, we can't hang, hang our hat on that and say, well, if there's a problem, we can fix it. That's not going to pay to fix the traffic.
Wouldn't any of that work after we've done by the state though?
I mean, we wouldn't be funding that work, right?
We, well, we'd have to get a permit from the state if we, we could work with them to fund improvements, but typically, yes, we would go through a tip program and they would fund it, or the developer would be required to fund it. I mean, don't forget, the developer is still going to have to go through AMIPA, so they're likely be required to do additional traffic improvements beyond what is required by the development agreement. If you think about the Amazon project, they had over two million dollars in traffic improvements that they had to overdue on their site. They are interestingly overlapping with a one fourteen project that was already on the tip, but once they stop the AMIPA process, I anticipate that there will be additional traffic mitigation that is going to be placed on the developer.
But, Dick, there's been a lot of focus on the Mass DOT project for one fourteen, and it seems like a great project, but this bore it to the point here, we've invested a lot of time in this, we really pressed hard on the traffic issue with the developers, traffic study, with the peer review, and with Mass DOT. And the bottom line, correct me if I'm recalling this incorrectly, in front of this development, which is right where you have the Andover bypass and Andover Street, it's the worst section, Mass DOT is doing very little, it's doing synchronized signals, which is great, but all the road widening, it happens in other locations, and will that help? Sure. But this is going to remain the same narrow bottleneck it is today, so when, when we count on the Mass DOT, let's just be careful about that. The Mass DOT project does different things to different parts of one fourteen, and in front of this development, it does very little.
Actually, it does a lot, actually, it does a lot, Peter, that's a misrepresentation.
In front of this, what does it do? A lot.
Puts a stoplight at Hillside coming to one fourteen, you're talking about a bottleneck.
And synchronized, yes, it doesn't widen it though.
There's not a light there, so you're, you're hyper-focused on narrow, on widening. Let's take a look at, if you actually look at what they're planning there, they're putting in two different lights. There's not a light on Hillside coming to one fourteen. For anybody who lives in that area, it's ridiculous to get out there now. That, in and of itself, will ease that process. So, if you're talking about bringing more people, that's a huge thing, because to Melissa's point earlier, that's a feeder, number one. Number two, you're putting a light where there's a hawk signal right now. Talk about a safety issue.
Right.
I don't know how many people run through red lights, but let's be practical here. There's a hell of a difference between a hawk signal and a red light.
Right.
In terms of crossing safety. So, now you have two red, two lights in, in an area that you didn't, you don't have them today, right? Third thing is, talk about working through a project. What's there today? That, that hawk signal, that intersection, got done because we, Merrimack, reached out to our state representatives and said, something needs to be done here, and it needs to be done in the right way. So, I think we underestimate our power and our leverage, and I look at this million dollars as a, as a way for us to come, if we needed to, to come back to say, say, hey, look, we've done our own study, our own research, and here's, here's the facts, and we need you to, just the way you responded to us in two thousand and seventeen, to put this in, we need you to do whatever. And so, it's these sort of contingencies that I think address your concern that it's not, it's not nailed down, but I see pieces here and history.
So, in my comments, I acknowledged lights. I agree they're doing lights. It's just that when people talk about the deep Mass DOT project, many of them talk about the widening. It's not occurring there. That will remain a narrow bottleneck roadway, but the lights will help.
But you've got a left turn, but now you've got, now you have proper turn access. If, again, if you look at the Mass AV project that we did, once you have proper turn lanes, that can make, that can make a world of difference in terms of safety and flow.
I did bring it up so you could see the turn lanes. I feel like we did, we saw the one fourteen project so long ago, so I did bring it up just so everybody could see what it's going to look like. I do, I love passionate.
I was trying to recall if they were reconfiguring the, that whole massive intersection, are they reconfiguring that as well?
The bypass.
Yeah, the bypass, right, they're reconfiguring that whole mess there.
Yes.
They're also making a consistent corridor from Willow down to Waverly, is that?
Right.
Which is going to make a huge.
And some of that's going to have widening down in those sections.
Correct, and that's going to make a huge difference, and I, I would say that the bottleneck, because I work at Willow's and I used to commute from Danvers, the bottleneck is in front of Stop &amp; Shop, and that's narrow, and is going to get widened.
And that's not going to change.
That's getting widened.
Nope, not done.
You come down.
My market basket.
No, Stop &amp; Shop.
Oh, Stop &amp; Shop.
Stop &amp; Shop, yeah, I would come from Danvers and come through that way. And I, I would say that that's where your bottleneck is, but it, again, we go back to the fact that we've got three big things coming together, and they sort of all need to, puzzles that need to fit together, and there's so many details that need to get worked out moving forward.
So, the last question I have, Melissa, was, there's a lot of talk about Royal Crest is not in good shape today, and there's a lot of attributes about.
puzzles that need to fit together, and there's so many details that need to get worked out, um, moving forward.
The last question I had, Melissa, was, there's a lot of talk about Royal Crest is not in good shape today, and there's a lot of attributes about this project that people admire. Is it true to say this is our only shot? It has to be this project, this big, this density, or it's nothing? Because the other question on the table is, why not a right-sized project? I know we depend on developers to do development, but do you think this is the only shot? What some people would consider to be the bad choice is the only choice. Is that what we're saying?
I think this is the only project that's in front of us to consider. Um, this is the only project that's tied to this development agreement. And I think this is the only project that I've been told by the developer financially works for them. Right? So I can't answer that question, you know, they're the only ones that can answer that question for you. My job is to mitigate the burdens of the development the best that I can, which I think I've done. Um, you know, so what happens if it doesn't pass town meeting? You know, we've talked about that. The dorm gets built, is the parcel subdivide, is there two potential forty B projects? Um, you know, we, we talk about those, we talk about what that burden will look like, um, because we have to plan for that, right? But all we can do is plan for the future, and so that's what we try to do with our development agreement, but I can't answer that question.
Right. Well, I appreciate your comments.
Any more questions, comments?
Okay, so our next step is we're gonna continue the public hearing as to this, so, um, and that will allow for what we'll do as part of that, just so everybody knows. Uh, we will, um, read into the record any comments that would come in. We'll open it up to public comment if people wanna make public comment. Um, the select board is going to adjourn their meeting and then re-establish their meeting over at town hall, is that right?
Yes, we are gonna recess, um, so we're not part of your public hearing and don't deliberate when we shouldn't be. And we're gonna go upstairs and finish our meeting, um, and the rest of our agenda. So I will entertain a motion to go into recess. Motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye, we're in recess. Thank you again so much for having us. This was great.
All right, we're gonna take a two-minute recess, just till.
All right, we are, uh, re-adjourning the, uh, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. We didn't take attendance. Uh, everyone, uh, if we could take attendance and just state whether you've been here for the entire meeting, please.
Kelly, we're taking, we're taking attendance. Yeah, here. Okay.
Here, I've been here for the entire meeting.
And remote, attending remotely.
Attending remotely.
Alyssa Koda?
Here, I've been here.
Peter Boyton?
I.
And been here for the whole meeting.
Been here the whole meeting.
Sean?
Here.
John?
Here.
And he's been here the whole time, I can vouch for it. Uh, yes, I'm here and I've been here since, uh, seven thirty. Okay, uh, we are now gonna go to our continued public hearings. Article ten, amend the zoning by law to establish Article nineteen mixed-use overlay district. Article ten, amend the zoning map of the town of North Andover, uh, by including approximately seven six acres of land located at one and twenty-eight Royal Crest Drive.
So just to point a clarification, you're calling Article ten, it's Article X, cause the numbers haven't been assigned yet.
Ah.
So they're each Article X, but we should know by tomorrow night what the article numbers are.
Okay, thank you. I've been, yeah, sorry, I was thinking Latin. Um, all right, Article X, X as in we don't know.
Right, until the warrant, when we get the warrant, which I think we'll have tomorrow.
I would prefer like Article question mark then. Um, okay, Article, Article, okay. Um, and we are doing these, uh, mix, so I'm gonna say pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts two thousand twenty-one, this public hearing of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted in person and via remote means. In accordance with applicable law, specific information, and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with the right and or requirements, attendance meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting in person, attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their television by tuning to Comcast Channel eight or Verizon Channel twenty-six or online at www.northandovercam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we'll post on Town and North Andover website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceeding as soon as possible after the meeting. Public would like to participate in the public hearings but not attend the meeting in person, you may email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to geneenrigth@j e n r i g h t@northandoverma.gov. Your question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. Uh, so the first thing I'd like to do is talk about our timeline. So I mentioned earlier that we're, uh, potentially gonna take a vote, uh, on our recommendation tomorrow. So one of the things that the planning board is responsible doing is for any zoning-related articles, is voting what our recommendation would be. It's not binding in any way on the town, it just tells the town, hey, this is what a majority of the planning board, uh, would, uh, recommend on this article. We like to do that so that it appears in the warrant, so that before the warrant is closed, that people can, uh, when it's printed, they can look at it and see, hey, this is what the planning board recommends. We're not obligated to do that. If we wanted to, we could, uh, wait until town meeting to make our recommendation at town meeting, but I, I think the better practice, as I've seen, and I think it's mostly been the practice, is to try to put it in the warrant article. Uh, it's in the warrant itself. Um, so, uh, to do that, my understanding, Gene, is that we would have to vote tomorrow because the select board is gonna close there.
So the budget calendar has the select board vote to close the warrant on my, on March twenty-eighth, and the select board vote on the warrant article recommendations on March twenty-eighth. So tomorrow's meeting is your last scheduled meeting ahead of the twenty-eighth, and typically, they have your recommendations ahead of their vote. The warrant is scheduled to go to print on April fifteenth, so you do have one meeting ahead of April fifteenth, scheduled on April fifth. Um, but again, it's just, that's beyond the date that they've scheduled to make a recommendation.
But are we bound by that date they scheduled? Can we still get in the warrant?
I guess the articles in the warrant, the question is whether in the written book, our recommendation will be listed there or not. I mean, I, you, you're right that the majority of the times we do it in advance, but I would say at least twenty, twenty-five percent of the time over the years, we've waited because there's reason to wait. I mean, uh, because your recommendation, you're making it to town meeting, it's printed in the, you know, written handout or something like that.
It'll be in the planning board report, is a separate document that has your recommendation.
Yeah.
In order to get it in the warrant is, is held to this calendar. That's all.
Is there a reason for us to wait to expect more information if we wait longer?
I think there's, I, I think there is. There's more dialogue. I mean, I, I, I think we're better served waiting.
So, so why don't I talk to the town manager's office and see, and tomorrow, and we can have an update as to what it would mean.
Okay. Is there something that people wanna decide on today so that they know what to say, you know, if we do take a vote tomorrow? Do we wanna vote on whether to, um, to have a vote tomorrow? I mean, I, I guess I'm.
Well, I don't think we need, I mean, let's just tomorrow, just have a, the conversation tomorrow. I mean, it's, you know, I mean, and we could decide, and, you know, we could decide to vote, or we could decide not to vote, or however we want.
I mean, worst case scenario, if we don't vote tomorrow, we have one more meeting, where if we wanted to have it printed in the warrant, we could, right?
Is that accurate, Gene?
That's accurate, but your recommendation wouldn't be ahead of when the select board is planning theirs on March twenty-eighth. Now, they may very well have a meeting beyond March twenty-eighth, ahead of the fifteenth as well, and that's what I'd wanna clarify, so.
And I also get the sense that, at least on this one, I'm not sure that they're waiting on our opinion to, I mean, I think they have.
I think they have.
They've done some homework. They, I think they have opinions, I think, outside of necessarily how we particularly vote. John?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, like, I guess what new information would we need to see to actually make a recommendation?
I don't know if there's any, but at the same time, you don't know until you find out what that information is.
Well, we're gonna have meetings, and there could be people from the public who say something, and, I, I mean, sometimes that makes a difference. I mean, that's the whole point of the public being there, when we, you know, I, I know we're attentive to that, but I see value in continuing to gather that input from the public to inform our views.
So we do still have the, in terms of the bylaw, we still do have the parking open, so we'll talk about that tomorrow. So why don't we talk, talk tomorrow, and, uh, we'll get a sense of the board if people want to vote, then we're able to vote tomorrow. If people are not, um, really, I'd say, we can take a vote on it, but I'd be inclined to wait if anybody wants to wait, um, because there's not a necessity. Um, but if someone wants to make a motion to vote tomorrow, we can do that. My inclination would be if anybody wants to wait, to at least give it till that April fifth date. Um, but I would have a strong feeling at that point to at least take a vote on whether to vote, because personally, I think it should be in the warrant, and we can have differing opinions, and we can take a vote on that. But we might as well, at least, that's kinda my feeling. Um, so we'll talk about it again tomorrow, and that's kinda what we'll do, okay? All right, uh, let's read public, well, uh, why don't we take public comment first? A lot of you have been waiting here. So why don't we take public comment, and then we'll read into the record any resident comments. Um, again, nobody has to come up, but if you've been here, you have well earned the time, so if you'd like to come up and make a statement, please, or a question, please do. Someone new?
Hi, my name is Anne Gray. I live at forty-nine Rosedale Ave, um, right on the Franklin School first baseline. So I'm a Nevada to the property, and I've been involved in many of the Zoom calls along the way. Um, I do have a number of questions, and, um, my notes are kinda all over the place, cause I was at the previous meeting upstairs with the, uh, select board. I have concerns about the density of the project, okay? It's a huge project. Um, and there's a lot of people that will be living there. One of my concerns is crime. When, I've been in town for thirty-five years, and, uh, I think it was when Chief Police Stanley was the, the chief of police, we had a lot of break-ins on one fourteen. And, um, I read about, um, one of the police saying, well, it's, the, the problem is with one fourteen, they go in, they break into cars, they keep, you know, smash and grab, and they're off and onto four ninety-five before anyone can get there. Royal Crest currently has one entrance into the facility, into the, the area, and it will have four. And it will be a lot more people, a lot more cars, a lot more property, and a dorm right on one fourteen, which in my opinion, now, this is world according to Anne, um, let's see, what do college kids do on the weekends? You're asking about, there's gonna be drug dealing going on there. No doubt in my mind. No, maybe that's, uh, anyway, that's my opinion. So when stuff like that happens, how's, if there's some type of crime that happens and someone takes off down one fourteen, what's the likelihood of anyone being pursued? I think it's probably pretty low. And I have asked in my, um, discussions with the, on the Zoom calls about the possibility of putting a police substation in there. Or have some type of, um, some type of enhanced security for the area. Cause I know in Merrimack College, I mean, typically when you have security at a dorm, it's somebody sitting at the desk, walking, letting people come in because they have an ID. So that's one of my personal concerns, excuse me, with regard to the density of the area and the possibility of, of crime, okay? I do have a quest, couple of questions about, um, the, the property itself, and, uh, I hear about the town homes, but I see nothing in any of the written documents as to whether or not they're condo, condominiums, if there's home ownership there, if this is all rental. I don't know if you guys can speak to that.
Do you wanna answer them? Do you wanna, why don't, why don't we get out all your questions?
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, thank you. So that's, I.
So condo owner?
Yeah, condo, if it is ownership, because people, um, behave differently when they own the property than when they don't, okay? Um, also, uh, the, there's, uh, been discussion about moving the eight hundred students that are currently living there onto the dorm. Does that mean the rest of the property will be restricted from housing students?
So, uh, I, I can tell you that at previous meetings, the answers to those were that they intended, the intention is for the, uh, town homes to be owned. That's the intention. Um, in terms of restrictions, no, frankly, I don't think it's, I don't think it would be legal to.
It actually is.
Okay. Uh, then, there was no, um, no mention of any restriction of saying you can't have students there.
So that would, that would be a request, cause part of this, putting everybody in the dorm that neighbors Rock Road and people there, is to try to corral the students and not have them mixed among the population. That's part of the motivation, which I heard tonight.
I think part of the explanation we heard, and I'm not defending it, I'm just trying to recollect it, I think, was, sometimes you get students living a place that their parents may have rented.
Mm-hmm.
And so I think the college may be limited, because even if they were to say students can't rent that, I don't know that they can prevent somebody else renting it and letting a student use it. I think that was the explanation we got. Is that right?
That, that was part of it, yep.
All right. Uh, question also, it's about the dorm, and maybe you can, no, we can't answer that. Um, there's hundred and thirty-five parking spaces for a dorm that has eight hundred and twenty-four students. So I'm just, you know, usually upperclassmen tend to have cars, freshmen and sophomores don't, so I'm a little bit concerned about that being a freshman or sophomore dorm, which tends to be more of a party dorm, and giving that residents and families live in the area, it's, it's right on the, right on the border. Uh, one of the issues that we've had in my neighborhood is, and I haven't been able to get an answer with this in, in the conversations, is our water table is really high. Uh, guy two doors down had a house built, like, kinda three houses across from him. Um, it's a very small house there, they tore it down, put up a big house, and he had water in his basement for the first time. So we, I know there's been a lot of water studies and runoff and all that other stuff, but the water table in the area is very high, and putting something with that, a floor area ratio that high and the density of it, I have concerns about it that have not been answered. And my neighbors have it as well. And the guy next to me has three sump pumps, so.
Tom, can I ask you a question at this point? So I think we had a very good analysis of what the developer proposes to do with stormwater management on the property, and it's quite impressive. But have we asked on, about how this density of development may affect stormwater surrounding the property? I mean, that's the kinda thing that an engineer could inform us on.
I feel like we did discuss that.
I don't remember that part.
I know it's been a while. I believe.
Did we?
I always forget the guy's name, that, that, I was gonna get, that I always call on. Um, but, um, he did talk about the impact on, on the water table, and, but we can go back.
In the surrounding area.
Yeah, 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 that it would, that they did predictions that it would improve.
Um, you know, the hydraulic stuff is, it's very complex.
Yeah.
Very nuanced models. I, I think my experience in the waters, but that over time, they get better and better at that stuff and managing it. But the, the basic premise is that you have to improve the flow from the site to off the site. It has to be equal to a better, and I, you know, again, I defer to you on some specifics, but I, if you have a good engineer, you should be able to manage that, and, you know, I, I'm reasonably confident that that would be the case.
All right, thank you, that's it.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, so I can address some of them, though. Some of those are planned to be addressed tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, so just the parking issue, we plan to address that tomorrow, so I'll give a full sort of analysis and answer to some of the questions that came up with the last public hearing, as well as address this question tomorrow. Um, as far as the dorm security, as was enumerated within the development's agreement, the dorm will be supervised, and there will be, you know, on, so supervision and security, uh, to help manage the, uh, the students. Part of the issue right now is that there's over eight hundred students that live at Royal Crest today. They are spread all over the property. And while there is significant effort to, uh, supervise those students, it's very difficult with the, the current condition of the students. So building a purpose-built, specifically-designed student housing facility that our architect is extremely experienced in doing, uh, helps that, that situation tremendously.
The dorm, the dorm swipe in, right? You have to, you have to have a card to swipe in?
There's single entry, single points of entry, um, so we expect that to be, uh, up quite.
What I'm reading from the town manager is slightly different than what you've said, and maybe you can correct us on this. Resident Hall, for the Merrimack College part, at Royal Crest shall have a responsible party on premises, not security. A responsible pro- party who shall be responsible, not for carrying out security, but for contacting the appropriate party. So there's gonna be someone there who's gonna make a phone call. That's it.
To the Merrimack Police Force, I'll let, let Jeff.
Plus, it's, it's not a security presence by this agreement.
There might be something separate, right?
Maybe just a.
Well, let's hear, let's hear from John.
I appreciate the, the way that you're reading it. Let, let me make a slight adjustment to it, because you have to have the context of, there are moments in time where Merrimack College can address a certain situation.
Right.
And there are moments in time where only North Andover Police. And there are moments in time where only North Andover Police can address that situation. The way that we drafted it was to avoid the appearance that the institution would then attempt to usurp the North Andover Police Department and suggest that it would then address all matters, even those matters that shouldn't be addressed by the college itself. So I appreciate your reading it, I, I didn't read it that way when I helped draft it, but that was the intention of it. It is not, there is security that would be in the building, the Merrimack College Police Department will play a role in that, there will be staff on, there will be residential life staff as well. So all of that will be in place, but the way that that was worded was, you tie that to the previous bullet, I think it was, which is, make sure there's the MOU, I think that, right? That's how that all comes together.
I actually just have one, one additional question for you, and I don't know if you guys have the analysis yet, but I guess how many RAs would be in, in, I guess, in this dorm?
So we, we normally do between, for every one student, for every one RA, it's normally around fifty to fifty-five students. So if you've got eight hundred there, you're going to, you know, do the math quick, right? That's what, sixteen, right? There'll probably also be a area coordinator for a staff that large, right? So there'll probably be an adult, an actual staff person, either on the site or even living there. We haven't gotten that far, but that's normally how we do it, so at Royal Crest now, for the five hundred and thirty-five students that we have, we've got that increment, I think it's eleven RAs, and then we actually have a full-time staff person that's in one of the units at Royal Crest now.
Got it, so, so maybe just, estimate it's like twenty, twenty people on the staff would be eligible to make, make that call, if you will, if there was an issue.
Yeah, yeah.
I actually have one other question, well, it's actually probably more than mine. And it's indirectly related, this, you may have brought this up again, but, you know, there's obviously multiple components of development, I suspect there probably be different building firms that actually build the different sections of the project.
Yes.
What is the model for the overall governance when everything's done? Like, who manages the roads? It's, it's almost like a little city, but how do you do that? Is it, how are you managing that?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's expected that Air Aimco, the current property owner, would sort of oversee the entire property, they remain the property owner, it's expected that there's, you know, this is not atypical, this is not a new thing for our development team, so we have developments of this type throughout the nation and that is a typical-
But how does it work? Like if, if there's potholes or something like that, who fixes them and who decides to fix them?
We fix them, we, we, they're privately owned streets, we fix them.
So is it a single management company that actually runs the entire complex, or?
Yes, yes, that's correct, yes. And obviously we have partner entities, like Merrimack would be part of it and they're-
It seems to me potentially as part of that is, you could put a security provision to answer our question about concerns about that.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's in our interest for the place to be safe and fighting, comfortable.
Without a doubt, I was just curious about-
And typically, we do have a security, we, we definitely have a twenty-four hour onsite property management throughout the site that keeps an eye on these sorts of things.
Yeah, okay.
There was a question about the townhouses and homeownership, it's, as was stated, our intention is for those to be for homeownership. Housing for students, not in the residence hall, student housing facility, but throughout the rest of the, the project, you know, we've, we've heard this a lot, we've talked about it a lot, we do not, with the introduction of eight hundred and twenty-four beds of dedicated student housing, that essentially takes a lot of the demand off of the rest of the housing, it focuses them there. Is there an instance where there may be an upperclassman, a grad student, that might want to rent a unit? It's possible, but we don't expect there to be very much, honestly. One of the attractive things about Royal Crest right now is that students can band together as roommates and rent a larger unit, a three-bedroom unit. We will have very few three-bedroom units in the new development, so we don't expect underclassmen to be doing that, sort of banding together because it's super cheap, renting a larger unit, and that, those units just won't be available once this is redeveloped. There was a question about the drainage, and we've talked a lot about the drainage and stormwater management, and as the board discussed and, and referenced earlier, this is an opportunity. We know, and we have experienced a lot of drainage problems, when, when the property was originally built in nineteen seventy, there was insufficient infrastructure that was accounted for at that time. There's over fifty acres upland of our, of our site that drains onto our site and then down through our site towards the Berkeley Road neighborhood. We are going, this is our opportunity to completely rebuild the underground infrastructure to manage that stormwater. So as you mentioned, we have a very professional, a very experienced engineer, and we are confident and we have done the studies with the data that shows that that stormwater will be managed. Thank you. Anyone else? And I will read the comments that we got, once we're done with the comments that are people here.
Long night, evening. Mike Consoli, thirty-five Meadowwood. Thanks for being so late and having the SLUT board here. I've lived in town for nineteen years, you guys might know some of this already from past meetings. My wife and I are Merrimack alumni, so kind of vested on, on both sides of this. I just wrote some notes down as sitting, sitting here and things that kind of popped up, and so I have a couple of questions and maybe a couple of comments, but one of the things, Michael, you mentioned was that there was going to be a small, I think it was a little grocery store, and my envision of, of this project from the beginning was that it was going to be mixed use, and I, I explained it to people as really looking like Linfield Marketplace, like, like shops and hotel and apartments. And tonight, in, in the last meeting I was at, it seems like maybe it's not so many stores. So I guess one of the questions was, how many retail stores? And I know, again, two meetings ago, you couldn't mention who is going in there, but if we can get kind of some numbers around that. I am concerned, grocery store, are they going to sell alcohol? Do they need a liquor license to sell alcohol? And it's sort of twofold. One, there's going to be college students there, upperclassmen who will be of age, so just lends itself to drinking. But we're also hearing a lot about, this whole project is for pedestrian use and keeping people close together so they don't have to drive their cars, which again, sounds great, but now I'm hearing a little store, so is it really a grocery store or just like a, a market, corner store, and people are going to actually have to come and go like they normally do? So I'm, I'm a little confused and maybe concerned as to what the marketing of, marketing is of the project, that it's, again, pedestrian use and bicycle use and bike lanes and all that stuff, but will people actually have to leave the property to do their shopping? So-
So the grocery store was kind of explained early on as the size and scope of like a Trader Joe's.
Okay.
So that type, not necessarily Trader Joe's, but that type of smaller grocery store, not as big as Market Basket, but that type.
Kind of an aside, is there, is there one going into Rite Aid? Because I'm, I'm told there's a, there's a market going in there, so-
I don't know what's going into Rite Aid. Anyone?
Just to, you don't have to, it just, I, I, it, kind of firsthand knowledge that, that there's a, there's a market going in there. I assume Trader Joe's, but again, it just adds to foot traffic, which might be good for you guys. Doesn't add to the, to the car traffic, which will be bad. Sorry, move on. Parking spots was a question, you said you were going to address it tomorrow, but, but I am a little concerned. I thought it was a hundred and twenty-eight spots, but, but then I saw that there's a garage, so I don't know if that's a hundred and twenty-eight spots in the garage, but I guess maybe we'll get some more clarification tomorrow. I know Merrimack charges students to, to get a parking pass, but now there's going to be eight hundred students living there, who, are they going to charge them? Who gets the money? Things like that, I think are, are of concern. Comment that I had was, just back to when the town manager was speaking about the, the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the, for the property at, on Great Pond. It's a two-point-seven-five million dollar property, I'm not sure what five hundred and fifty thousand dollars is going to do, so it's more of a, maybe a point of clarification, that it sounds great that we're going to get five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to buy a property, but it's not-
It's a complicated story, trust me.
Okay, again, I just, as, as a citizen, I mean, I'm hearing that and-
I think we raise the issue as much as we can in, in the setting, so it's, and I think we, I think you did a very nice job of reframing that, the intent of, maybe it's not to buy the property, but it's for overall-
Which I like better, yeah, right.
If, if it were for the property, it would probably either be as part of a further into negotiation, right? That, that price, that price is very high for something that is in the water, literally, but also, there could also be other funds allocated from some other place. But, I mean, I think, I think our, the point was clear earlier on, that that's a possibility, let's put the money up and-
Right, changing the language and that is, is probably going to get-
Maybe use that for something to help the water.
Again, on, on that agreement, she said very specifically that, that there'd be a million dollars for contingency for traffic, and I know, Mr. Boynton, you took kind of the words out of my mouth, that a million dollars isn't going to cover any of that stuff, but one of the things that she mentioned was very specifically a pedestrian footbridge. And from about a year ago, we were told that's a non-starter, that's not going to happen, nor would a million dollars cover that. So I just don't, I don't think the, the townspeople should be swayed that they're going to hear pedestrian footbridge. Anyone that I talk to, even when they're in favor of the project, they're like, well, all they have to do is put a, put a footbridge, just like, just like they have at the high school. And if they hear that, that, oh, there's, there's a contingency for that, there really isn't, because a million dollars isn't, isn't going to cover. When they spent two and a half million dollars, not, what, two years ago, three years ago, to, to fix that road, they didn't do it then because it was too expensive. So I just, it seems weird to have that in there.
Well, it's, it's more of, again, we're not voting on the development agreement, I think it's a way to keep that discussion open, right? Because you're right, it did seem like that was pretty much foreclosed, and I think it's a long shot between the air rights and the state wanting to do it and the town paying for it, or Merrimack paying for it, the state paying for it. There are a lot of things that would have to be crossed, but the money is, is specifically set aside to commission safety studies and to see what's necessary, and then if that becomes necessary, then there, there would have to certainly be further discussions. It wouldn't be like a million dollars, we'd just be able to do a footbridge.
Yeah, I, I guess I'd just push back a little bit more, that I don't, MassDOT's spending thirty-plus million dollars, I doubt that they're going to come in in five years and rip that road up again, but maybe they can address that. So I just wanted to, I wanted to really bring up the pedestrian footbridge. A couple more things. I feel like most of the proponents that, on the project, they start with, we all agree that Royal Crest is, is in, in need of repair. And, and it's been there and it, and it's falling apart and there's so many things wrong with it. Well, a lot of houses are like that. A lot of people's houses, this is, it's private property, and if it's falling apart, then the owner should take care of it. I'm not sure why the taxpayers have to worry about if there's mold in the buildings at Royal Crest. It's not my building, I, I have problems in my house, if the town wants to give me money to fix it, I'd gladly take it, but I don't think the town's in the business of doing that. So I, I just think, I mean, you guys need to look at that, at it from that perspective, that Royal Crest might be in deplorable condition, but that's not for us to, to fix. Last two things. The Hock signal, again, a lot of talk about that, and there's a lot of talk of, of a student getting killed, which obviously is horrible. But I drive that road morning, noon and night, I see kids running, and what I think about is obviously hitting a kid. And, and it's not just the kid that's going to get hurt or injured or, or die, it's the person who hits them. If I hit someone tonight going home, it's ten-thirty at night, the kids don't use the signal at night, my life is ruined if I kill someone. Like, so it's not just, it's not just a simple, oh, it's a Hock signal and, and we need to train the kids how to cross. I think it's a little bit more serious than that, and, and I'm not downplaying a student getting killed by any stretch, don't, don't take it like that, but I think there's more than one person involved, and one, more than one family involved. So I just, I'd like the board to think about that. And then the last thing, Peter, I think you asked the question of, of the town manager before she left, and I was going to kind of preface it as well. With the, the pot plant that was going to go in several years ago, and many people that were up at the board voted in favor of it, and it got turned down by a long shot. And then a couple of years went by, Amazon came along, and it, and it won favorable action by a long shot. So maybe there isn't anything else today, that might be the best option today, but it doesn't mean that it's the only option. So just kind of throw that out there. Thank you.
All right, so the only thing that I heard that had, no, thank you, there was a question to answer was the delineation of the retail space. So if you can give us kind of just some rough estimates of shop numbers or things like that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the retail program is about seventy thousand square feet, so that's just about the rough numbers. As far as the grocery store, we're projecting it would be about twenty-five thousand square feet, as you mentioned. We expect that that would be a boutique, national scale grocery store. That would be a real asset. People have been really clamoring for those things, and there are several different ones, and we think that that would be a great asset for the people who would live at Royal Crest, as well as for people throughout North Andover.
So in terms of the grocery store, national chain boutique, is it on the model of the type of store that sells food like a Seven-Eleven, or more than that?
No, it's, as has been mentioned, it's projected to be like a Trader Joe's.
Okay, thank you.
The, the remaining retail stores, we see to be restaurants, you know, neighborhood level retail, but that's basically to serve the people who would live, work, play at Royal Crest, as well as people who could walk there from the surrounding neighborhoods, from Merrimack College, or you could visit there if you, if you live elsewhere.
Would the remaining ones be like eight thousand, ten thousand square feet, five thousand square feet?
Kind of, it, it, I mean, it would be build to suit, honestly, and we, you know, we haven't gotten that far down, but some restaurants are fifteen hundred square feet, some are three thousand square feet, could go up to eight thousand square feet, but typically, you know, we have, we expect there to be a wide variety of, of retail that'll serve the people who live there, as well as the surrounding neighborhood.
And does that seventy thousand include the spaces in the dorms on the first floor?
It does.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Should I open one last one?
If you want to.
Sorry, I, it was written down, and it was an important one. You mentioned that you own the property, so you were asking about potholes and who, and who runs it, but, so it was kind of a two-part question, was, who can you, you said there's a green area for festivals and things of that nature. Who gets to use that? Like, is it open to anyone? Can we rent it? Can, can I have a birthday party there, things like that? Or is it for just the residents of, of the, that live at Royal Crest? And then when you said, you know, you own the property, it made me think that, again, we live walking distance to Merrimack. During the pandemic, Merrimack was shut down, my kids, they, and neighbors, they rode their bikes over to Merrimack, and, and it was like they're, a big, huge campus for them, until one day, they realized that they were using the property and they kicked them off and said, you can't come here anymore. So when you own the property, you have, you know, there's parks and green space, but who, who actually can use it? Thank you.
No, absolutely, it's, it is a public amenity. So the town green is meant to be, anybody can visit the town green, it is meant for the public, you know, it is, it is there for people who live at Royal Crest, it's there for visitors to the new Royal Crest, it's there for anybody in town. If there's an activity going there, they want to go to the food truck, there's a food truck festival, anybody can go there, but it's expected to be privately owned, which is a model that is utilized throughout projects like this.
Okay, great. Anyone else?
I'm Hillside Road.
Can you say your name, please?
No, sorry, Russanne Wise, Hillside Road.
Thank you.
Quick thing that I wasn't going to say immediately, but the water issue, the runoff. I've been there for twenty-one years, there's been, I think, three projects at the Royal Crest, and the water table has gotten worse every single project. I've got trees dying because there's standing water now. So that is a huge concern, and I understand they're going to work on it, but I really don't want my house to flood, all right? And that does happen, it's, I never had to have a sum up, I do now. The other thing I want to bring up, density came up a few other times, all right? And I love the idea of this project, I really do. It does need to have something done over there. But there were a couple of other numbers that popped up. My original number was about twenty-two hundred residents were going to be there, and I think now it's about twenty-six hundred. This is in seventy-six acres, okay? Doing the math, seventy-six acres is point eleven square miles. Right now, North Andover has about one thousand one hundred people per square mile, roughly. This is a lot. Out of curiosity, I said, all right, let's take a look around and see what other areas would have this type of density. Went to the city of Cambridge, thinking Harvard. City of Cambridge has eighteen thousand five hundred twenty-nine per square miles, or eighteen hundred fifty-three per tenth square mile, all right? We're talking twenty-six hundred in a tenth. Do you know what the largest population in New England is? What municipality, what city? Somerville. That's nineteen thousand six hundred and seventy-one. That's one thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven- That's one thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven people per tenth square mile. We're talking seven hundred people more. Right there, where two major state roads meet, very heavily trafficked ones, between two of the busiest traffic lights in North Andover, we're going to put another traffic light in the middle, and we're going to have two more points of entry, if I've looked at the diagram correctly. I just thought it might be interesting to know those numbers. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Anyone else for public comment before I read the resident comments that have come in already? George?
I'm sorry, I wasn't going to, but I, I'm George Kaler, I live on Quail Run, forty-one Quail Run. I just want to say one thing about density. Our population is going to grow. We have to build more houses going forward, more houses have to be provided. You get that either by increasing density or decreasing open space. So the people that say that this project is too dense, what I would challenge them to do is say, okay, where would you put, if you reduce the density, where would you put those people that you've cut out? Where in town would you put them? And I would bet my firstborn son, except I have to admit my firstborn son is an adult, so I can't give him away. I would bet my firstborn son that when you say, we'll put those people here, there will be people that will complain about the density there. So you can't, I don't think, well, my comment, in my opinion, is that the density is too high, is not really a valid comment. I think the project should be examined on the basis of its merits, and just using density as a reason to oppose it, I don't think is valid, because it's either increased density or decreased open space.
Thank you, George. All right. I'm going to, why don't I read these comments, and then if anyone else really has anything that they want to add before we get to eleven o'clock, we can do that. Or we are going to have another meeting tomorrow, so feel free to say it then. All right, I'm going to read a comment, this is from Mary Lou Schallman, this is Wednesday, March ninth, two thousand twenty-two. To planning board, care of Jean Enright, as the time of a vote on the proposed new zoning approaches, I have a few comments and questions for the record. The density and scale of this development is inappropriate, the seventy-six acres is zone residential and surrounded by residential zoning. I am not persuaded that the renaming of sections of the proposed development results in a traditional New England village feel, and that's in quotation marks. Other mixed-use developments in towns such as Princeton on Osgood Street do have four-story residences, but all the other uses are scaled down to two to three stories along the busy street. On the submitted plan of Royal Crest, the proposed multi-unit housing, student housing building, and hotel are shown as four stories, but notice their equivalent in height to residential height townhouses five-point-three and five-point-seven stories high. Let's compare apples to apples and talk height, not floors. The development wants, developers want us to be grateful to them for building housing suitable for young professionals and downsizing retirees. They tout the green, in quotation marks, all electric buildings, while desirable, these are not new features. I lived there for forty, I lived there forty-three years ago, all the residents joked about it being the home of the newlywed and nearly dead. Good tagline. All appliances and heat at Royal Crest are electric. On an earlier drawing, what looked like ponds created by development were explained as delineations of wetland not to be disturbed. The latest plan shows constructed wetlands. What are these? Are they open ponds? They are lined up adjacent to the boundary behind the homes on Hillside Road. I strongly object to creation of standing water ponds where annoying and disease-carrying mosquitoes breed. Patches of the land are wet throughout those woods, but there is no standing water currently except during brief periods after rainstorms. If ponds or standing water are being created, then this does not qualify as taking care of runoff or our neighbors is conveyed by the developers. Encouraging the creation of student housing on this site feels like a mistake. My primary concerns are twofold. One, the attendant noise for neighbors on the Berkeley roadside will be considerable. Two, the safety hazard of having a greater number of students crossing increased lanes and volumes of traffic on State Highway one fourteen twenty-four-seven seems unconscionable. The college owns approximately twenty-four acres across Elm Street from the main gate and surrounded by non-residential property, a far safer location for crossing to campus. From Mary Lou Schallman, eighty-five Hillside Road. So I saw two questions, I think, that could be answered. One is, what are the, describing the constructed wetlands, and then, oh, the appliances and heating, the electric, tell us what the changes are.
Yes, so to address the comments about the constructed wetlands, that is just what they are. So it's actually an expansion of the existing wetlands that are in that area. These are engineered wetlands, it's very common, but this is somewhat new stormwater management technique. As was mentioned before, Hillside is actually up gradient of our site. So from all the properties up on Hillside, it's actually draining down to our site, not vice versa. So constructing these wetlands gives us more capacity, it gives those wetlands an additional natural sort of sponge. They act as a natural sponge, collect that water and allow it to drain out naturally. They are not drainage, you know, standing water ponds. These are constructed vegetated wetlands, they are expansions of the existing wetlands. They would connect some of the more isolated wetlands together to make them more effective, and then it would feed into an underground system of infrastructure that is the opportunity. It's the opportunity that we have here. There was a comment earlier about, why should people care about, you know, having to fix up the buildings? Well, we have, we cannot, it is not possible to address the infrastructure problems on that site without a project of this scale. This is our opportunity to sort of start new and look at it holistically so that we can address a lot of those underground infrastructure issues, as well as some of the other issues that we've been talking about. The question about the heating systems and the, that exist there today versus what we are proposing is a good one, and also kind of is related to this. It was mentioned that the heating systems from forty-three years ago were electric. It is true that they are electric today, they are the exact same heating systems from forty-three years ago. They are conductive, electric, baseboard heat, that if you know and you have that in your house, or it's an older system, it is extremely inefficient. It is extremely expensive, and today, it costs over five hundred dollars a month to heat one of those apartments, which tenants are paying today. The hot water provided within those buildings is heated by propane with buried underground propane tanks. It is not an efficient system, it is incredibly outdated, and a project like this gives us the opportunity to completely rebuild that. The new buildings are going to be, as I mentioned earlier, are going to be state-of-the-art, and when I say all-electric, I'm not talking about the old-style electric conductive baseboard heaters, I'm talking about air-source heat pumps, the most efficient heating systems that you can possibly get in a residential setting, that is what we are talking about. It would make these buildings incredibly energy-efficient, and it would be a real benefit to the residents, to the planet, frankly. I mean, we really got to do something, and this is our opportunity to do it.
Okay, thank you. All right, and then I'm going to go there, two more comments. This is from Eli Adler Roth, March fourteenth. Dear planning board members, I'm writing today as a concerned citizen, I'm a father to young children, hoping I can afford to stay in North Andover, a family member to people living in town with disabilities, and a social worker providing care to survivors of domestic violence and other at-risk and marginalized members of our community. Across all these personal and professional identities, I am concerned by the lack of affordable housing that exists in North Andover. We are facing a housing crisis in Massachusetts, and especially in the Merrimack Valley. While there are those who claim our town is exploding or turning into a city, those are in quotation marks, the facts remain, as you are certainly aware, that this last decade of population growth represents one of the slowest in the last century. Nevertheless, the rate of new construction is not matching the rate of growth. The wait lists to move into a new apartment are months-long. Drive past an open house, you will see cars lined up around the corner. Supply and demand is a basic economic reality, and last year was reported that the cost of buying or renting in North Andover is up thirty percent compared to the prior year. This is driving young couples out of town, a fate my wife and I hope to avoid, but it is also making it hard for seniors to downsize, leading to overhoused individuals with children off at college, staying in four- and five-bedroom homes because they can't afford anything else in the area. Most concerning and unsurprising, however, is the impact of the housing crisis on those with the fewest resources. At my job, I know survivors who are waiting to find an apartment so they can leave the home they were abused in and cannot. Moreover, a healthy economy has people at all income levels, but right now our understaffed stores, restaurants, and other businesses cannot afford to hire anyone making enough to pay rent in North Andover. This is a problem that will impact all of us. With regards to the question of luxury apartments, in quotation marks, we know that the bigger driver of cost is not the appliances amenities of the granite countertops, but rather it is the land upon which a home is built, and the lack of new homes keeps costs sky-high. Furthermore, you do not make something more accessible by allowing less of it. Allowing the Royal Crest project to move forward will not fix all of these problems, but letting it falter would only make this worse. In addition to considering other fixes to our housing crisis, I ask you to please report favorably upon the proposal ahead of town meeting, and to fight hard for those of us who want to see North Andover as welcoming for everyone. That's Eli Adler Roth, one fourteen Beverly Street. And then we have from Kevin Driscoll, Monday, March fourteenth. Hi, Jean, I'm writing in support of the Trinity Development Project Royal Crest. There have been numerous meetings over several months, and each time I believe the developers have come to the table with sincere and genuine intentions to work with the town residents of North Andover. We have seen continued compromises and also continued enhancements made by the developers to make the project one the town can be proud of and also reap benefits from in both the short-term projects and long-term revenues. Sadly, I was blocked from the Facebook page established by residents opposed to the project because I expressed in a comment I wanted to be open-minded as I came into the process and ongoing discussion. That was met with my being labeled a traitor to the neighborhood and summarily blocked from the page, so I have not been able to keep track of that particular conversation. I think the mixed use is important for tax revenues, both for long-term benefits of this community. The collaboration with Merrimack will hopefully encourage Merrimack College to become a more cooperative and collaborative member of the town. The mixed housing for lower-income, middle-income families and seniors should create a wonderful community and neighborhood along one fourteen. Furthermore, the MassDOT project to reconstruct the one fourteen, one-twenty-five highway satisfies my concerns over the safety issues along this causeway. Like several other projects completed and underway in this town, this project will itself both recreate and re-enhance the area where it is to be constructed, replacing an outdated and worn-down Royal Crest community. I welcome this project, and hopefully we'll have the opportunity perhaps to live in this new community in the future. Thank you, Kevin Driscoll, eighty-six Kingston Street. Okay. Jean, did anything else come in during the year we've been here tonight?
No.
Okay, awesome. Does, I'm asking this, does anyone else want to make a comment tonight? Again, realizing we also have a meeting at seven o'clock tomorrow night. Awesome, you guys all picked up on that cue. Okay. Any other board member comments? Kelly, anything from the virtual space? Okay. Can we get a motion to, well, we'll continue this till tomorrow.
So you have inclusionary zoning, the map amendment, and this, all under one public hearing, that you can continue to the fifteenth?
Yeah.
There's also meeting minutes in your packet if you want to consider those.
If we want to, can we vote on the inclusionary zoning tomorrow, which seems to be less of an issue?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we'll try to do that. We'll vote on the inclusionary zoning tomorrow, and at least get that out of the way, clear the decks a little bit. Okay, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Do you want to do the minutes? Lunch first, meeting minutes?
No, let's do them tomorrow.
Okay.
Let's just do them tomorrow. I can't even think anymore. Could we get a motion to adjourn? Motion made. Could we get a second?
Second.
Second, and all in favor, Kelly?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
I was emphatic. Peter?
Aye.